Good morning, everyone. The time is eight oh six. It is Saturday, July twenty-sixth, and I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order. Will the city secretary please call roll?
Mitchell. Hi, sir.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
Okay, six members present. We have a quorum. Up next is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come up to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. It is now closed. So we're going to jump right into reports and presentations. Receive for presentation, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding the city manager's recommended operating and capital budgets totaling
Wow.
six hundred and three million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars for all the city's funds for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Langley.
It's a big number, right?
That's
A lot of, a lot of money.
I did, yeah.
Well, first of all, good morning to everyone. Thank you, guys, for being here. I know it is early. We do have lots of coffee available for this presentation. There will be math in the presentation, so just wanted to warn you. We have myself and Pravez Mohit will be doing the presentation. I'll be doing the first part of this, and then about thirty, forty slides in, I'll transition over to have Pravez doing that. We have a number of staff here. As you can see, we're all here to answer any questions that you, that you have. It's a rather lengthy PowerPoint, but there are some natural stopping points, some natural areas where we can answer questions. Certainly, any questions that you have as, as we're going through. If you have them, let us know. But there are some natural points that we'll stop and see if you have any specific feedback for us. I do believe that most of this will be a review and hopefully in one concise package that, that makes a lot of sense to the council. A lot of different discussions that we've had over the last several months and the last year about our strategic plan, budgeting items, strategic priorities that we're looking at. All of those have been folded into this recommended budget. All right, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and get us moving. So this is an overview of the entire presentation that we'll have today. So we're going through the process and the timeline, the strategic plan and the strategic focus areas. And one of the things I did want to mention to you today is that this budget presentation is organized around each of those focus areas, the strategic focus areas that we've talked about many times with the council. That's a change. We had them previously organized by departments and by topical areas. Now it's by those strategic plan focus areas. So hopefully, you'll like that and see the connection to that plan that we've been working on. And then at that point, once I finish that portion of the presentation, Pravez will go through all of the proposed fund financials. You do have a very large detailed book, budget book as well, that has all this information in it. But we'll give you the highlights of that. Pravez will walk you through that. And then we'll talk about the proposed capital improvement program, spending plan. That is a very large program, about one point two billion dollars over the next five years. And that's all of the water, wastewater, street projects, all the major capital items that we've been talking about, how to fund those over the next five years. And then we'll recap it and talk about the next steps. And this is not, certainly not the last conversation that you're going to have on the budget. This is one of the most important ones because it's my recommended proposed budget to you. And then over the next couple of months, you'll have an opportunity to discuss it further with the council, talk about potential changes, and then in September, you'll be asked to vote on the budget itself. So today is not a vote, it's a discussion. Any things that you, that you think you'd like to see changes on, we're looking for some of that direction, though. All right. Again, the budget is complex. There is lots of different pieces to it. So I wanted to give you what we, what we think are some of the key takeaways from all of the information that we have presented to you. The first is major capital projects are funded. This is a very large number, four hundred and sixty million dollars is for many of the capital programs that we have for just this coming year. And that's water utilities, streets, transportation, and parks projects. It's all-inclusive number. We do have also road projects. Seven road projects will go under construction in this next fiscal year. That's about a hundred and thirty-one million dollars in funding. That's all related to that road bond package that was approved by the voters in twenty-twenty-two. And then of that number, we also have about two hundred and forty-one million that's related to water and wastewater projects. A lot of these major improvements that we've talked about, the wastewater treatment plant in particular is a very large capital item that will be underway this coming year. Park projects, we have about thirty million dollars in funding for coming year in parks. And as you guys may recall, we're making a one point two million dollar investment in our police department with a new meet and confer agreement. We're very proud of that. That will make us the third highest-paid department in the region. So we're, that will be implemented in this budget as well. And then one of the other things that we always do and try to point out in these budget presentations is all of the different things that we've done over the course of the, the year to save money, to become more efficient, more effective in our operations. We're going to detail some of those for you today. Again, some of this will be a review because you've seen some of these, but it's a very large amount, twenty-one and a half million dollars that have been identified in cost containment measures just this past year. Without those savings, without those different programs and efficiencies that we've developed, you would not be able to do all of the things that are in this budget that are proposed. So those are very important. We look at them together. Before we ask you for one dollar for new funding, we want to demonstrate to you that we have done everything we could to, to be efficient with the dollars that you've given us. So all of those strategic initiatives will, does cost money. That projected tax rate is about sixty-two cents. We're in the process of finalizing that. Pravez will talk about that a little bit later in the presentations, as we're getting the final certified values and getting those calculations. Most of that increase is related to the bond program and raising that rate up to pay for all of the bond projects. We've talked about that several times. And we'll have a bond issue coming forward to you on August fifth that will solidify that bond. So those are the key takeaways. Okay, I'm going to keep, keep moving. All right, so the process, as I mentioned to you, it is a long process for the budget, and it starts back in early part of the year. So in March, as you'll recall, we had the visioning workshop. That was a really foundational discussion that we had for the strategic plan, some of the major elements that you wanted to include. And we talked about the budget process there as well. Then we had the community survey that was done in April, and I'll, I'll share some of the, the highlights of that to you as well. And then in May and June, we had a series of different budget workshops with you and budget presentations on some different topics across the organization, the large areas that we were looking at. Today, I'm giving the, the city manager's recommended budget presentation. We'll have a tax rate discussion later on in August. And then in September, there are two votes that you'll need to make for both the tax rate and the budget itself. That final vote will be on September sixteenth. So community survey, wanted to give you, again, just a recap of some of the things that we shared with you back in, in April. We, we surveyed five hundred and four residents. This is a good statistical survey, so it's meant to be a representation of the entire community. The areas on the right and the yellow, those are the ones that had the most dissatisfaction with them, streets and transportation, water and wastewater infrastructure. Those were areas that were, were issues. And then we also asked them, well, of all of these things, what are your top three priorities? And you can see those on the left, streets and transportation, police and public safety, water and wastewater infrastructure. And you'll see that this budget addresses all three of those priorities with lots of funding and lots of programs to improve those services. So this is a core part of our process is to reach out to the community, see what's important, and as we're bringing that forward to you, try to address those priorities. And so I believe this budget has done that. We also are, again, as I mentioned to you, really focusing on organizing this budget based on the strategic plan. This is a very important document that really outlines everything that we're doing across the city. And the budget itself is a critical document, if not the most important document, to execute the strategic plan. Without the budget, the way I always talk about this, it's, it's interesting conversation. But if it's in the budget, that's what gets done. So that's why we spend so much time on that with you is to, to make sure that the budget reflects your priorities, the things that you want to get done, and that it accomplishes the, the strategic plan. So that strategic plan has been developed over a number of months. And as you may recall, we came up with our new vision statement, which is over here, the undisputed regional leader in vehicular and pedestrian mobility, state-of-the-art parks, and sports infrastructure. So that's something the council came up with, and again, forms the basis for this plan moving forward. These are the strategic focus areas, excellent and accountable city government, sustainable and resilient infrastructure, safe and welcoming community, vibrant and fun destination, and thriving and prosperous economy. So each of the next few sections of this presentation, I will go through by these, each of these focus areas and talk about the programs and initiatives and the funding that's in each of these. So up first is excellent and accountable city government. Want to give you a quick review on some of the things that we've implemented over this past year to, to focus on organization, organizational and operational excellence. And a lot of these are really exciting. First of all, we implemented the new three-one-one customer service system. I think since that launch in March, we've logged over twelve thousand interactions with our residents, which is a staggering number, over twelve hundred different cases that have come through. And we're tracking each one of those and making sure when those come in that things get done. We've also focused on our park system, reorganized and developed standard operating procedures, which has improved our maintenance of our qualities and the performance of, of our programs. We centralized our procurement, and we also had the open gov system rollout. I know Jesse's talked to you about that in the past with all of our performance measures and information that's now online. We also standardized our recruitment, compensation, and job classifications. We had nearly four thousand applications that we reviewed and about a hundred and twenty-three positions filled this year. So really impressive. Some other items to mention to you, the SCADA system. This is a system that's used to control the water system that we have. It's a critical system. We've implemented that. We've also implemented the new generator docking stations for our water systems, which has been a, a long process and complicated, but we've, we've finally gotten that done. We've also reviewed how we handle plan reviews and development services and looked at our processes and procedures related to that. And then we brought forward to you a two-phase contract strategy for the wastewater treatment plant, when that has reduced the time required to get that plant activated by twenty-one months. So that's a significant improvement and gets us to where we need to be with that plant. Again, all review items, but just putting it together for you so you can see it. So now I want to transition into some of the cost containment items that we have mentioned to you in the past. You've seen these in different, different pieces, but I don't think you've ever seen it perhaps organized altogether. So we wanted to highlight this for you. Very quickly, I'll just run through some of these. We have used in-house electricians for a lot of park infrastructure rather than contracting out those services as we've done in the past. That saved about eight hundred thousand dollars this, just this past year on lots of projects, and also gotten the projects done quicker, too, which has been important. We've also had procurement savings through the consolidation of how we've moved some of the staffing around and reduced some of the duplication and efforts that we had across the organization. So that saved us about four hundred and thirty-six thousand. The customer service consolidation and realignment with the three-one-one system has also been an improvement, not only on service, which is the most important thing, but it's also saved quite a bit of money, about three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. As you may recall, our legislative program outreach was able to avoid about a million dollars in costs related to an AT&amp;T fiber line that we were struggling to get moved and was going to delay a project and require significant capital investment through our program outreach and our contacts through that program. We were able to work with AT&amp;T and get that fixed, which was a significant improvement. And then we brought to you a month or two ago, we have renegotiated our credit card processing contracts. That will save us about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars this current year and about two million dollars moving forward, which is a staggering amount of money for all the credit cards that we're looking at, but it's a significant savings. And then we're very proud to bring to you the savings for the road bond project. When we bid the Kohler's and BB West project, we worked hard to bring that to market very quickly, and that has generated eight million dollars in savings compared to what that project was budgeted at. So this is significant savings. Few others to mention to you. I mentioned before about the generators for the water facilities. We did secure a grant for that, and that grant is about one point three million dollars. So that's funding that we don't have to pay locally. So that's a, a great thing. We implemented the new sludge hauling contract over at the wastewater treatment plant. You've, you've talked about that a few times. Not only has that improved the performance out at the plant, but it's also saved us three hundred thousand dollars. We're also implementing the new automated meter integration system, AMI system. We're doing a lot of that work on our own with our own staff rather than contracting that out. We project that's about five to six million dollars in savings related to that activity. And as I mentioned earlier, we've streamlined some of our inspection and plan review processes. That's about another hundred and sixty thousand dollars in savings. And as you may recall, we outsourced all of our inspection costs this past year, and that generated two point two million dollars in savings by this, this coming year, twenty-five, twenty-six. So altogether, it's a very large staggering number, twenty-one and a half million dollars in activities that if not had, if these had not been pursued, those savings would not have been realized. So we're very proud of that. Hopefully, hopefully, you're proud of those savings that we're bringing to you. But they help us do more by being more efficient with the dollars that we're given. Helps us to have more programs, more operations that we need. All right, but we're not done. We continue to move forward. There's always room for improvement. So for next year, these are just three elements that I wanted to highlight that we're working on. The first is creating an in-house design team for our engineering group. Right now, all of our engineering work is outsourced. So we have all of those contracts that are needed. Even for very small projects, we're paying consultants and outside engineers to design those. What we're proposing is that we bring that in-house, and by doing that, we will be able to have six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in savings over and above what the cost of those employees are. So all those contracts that we have in our capital programs for the smaller projects, we're going to manage that, that moving forward internally. We're also proposing to bring in our capital project management team, and rather than outsourcing a lot of those, those operations to outside consultants that we bring that internally into staff, the cost of that operation is about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At a minimum, we will offset that cost. We don't yet know exactly how much savings it will be, but it's, it's directly tied to offsetting that cost of the new staff that will be here. And then finally, I wanted to mention to you our impact fees. We've talked about this briefly with you. One of the things that we did last year is we updated the impact fees, and council wanted to make sure that as soon as the water master plan was approved, that we recalculated that based on all the new costs that we had. So we worked very quickly with our consultant to look at those impact fees, and we're proposing that they be updated. They will increase the, the impact fee per LUE about seven thousand dollars. And if implemented, that would generate about seven point four million dollars more in revenue. That's revenue that does not have to be made up by the other ratepayers in the city. So it's a direct offset to the cost that would be, otherwise be paid by someone else. On August nineteenth, you'll have a public hearing on that and be asked to consider those impact fees going forward. And the law also changed, I believe, in this last legislative session. There's a law that limits the changes in impact fees to not more frequently than every three years. So it's important that if we had not brought this forward, we would have had another couple of years before you could have changed them again. So altogether, about nine million dollars in projected cost containment for this coming year. And we'll continue to bring these forward. We're always looking to get better. As we see additional opportunities for advancements and efficiencies, we will bring those to the council and share that with you. Okay, so that's it for the first strategic focus area. Next up is a very large one, our infrastructure, sustainable and resilient infrastructure. So some of the things I wanted to mention to you is, as we have been working over the last couple of years with the team, it was really important to set the foundation for how we were going to move forward in some of these projects and make sure all of the projects were done properly. And that meant working on a lot of master plans. So there's been a lot of those that have come before you. You've seen them in different components. But these are actionable documents to us. These are not things that we, we prepare and set on the shelf. These are things that we want to actually set in motion, and, and we are doing that. The first is the water master plan. That is a foundational document to us that really helps us establish where we're moving. It is guiding three hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in infrastructure improvement. So we're not guessing about where these things need to go. It's a very organized approach. We also have the sidewalk master plan that we've brought forward to you, and, and you'll see some of the, the segments that we're proposing later on in the presentation. We have the water and wastewater impact fee study that I just mentioned to you before. We also did a cost of service and rate study for water and wastewater, which guides what do the rates need to be by each of the classes so that we're recovering all of the costs proportionally from all of our ratepayers. So all of those things are moving us forward to actually make these projects a reality. We do have a few others as well. The Kyle Mobility Plan is underway. That public outreach will be open until the end of August, and we expect that final report next year, which will then guide additional investments that we'll need to make in infrastructure. We're also working on a facilities master plan, not, not just any one particular facility, but city hall, all of the different facilities that we have around town. What's that overall long-term plan that we need to have, and where do we need to be making investments? That will be coming back to you in September, so you'll see that. And last, but certainly not least, Unified Development Code. This is also a very important process and document that guides all development standards across the organization and across the city. And we're working on that, and we expect that to be done in late twenty-six. All right, so from planning to progress. So now this is some of the things that those plans have, have generated in terms of projects that I wanted to mention to you. For water and wastewater, there have been a lot of these, but these are some of the big ones. The Alliance Water Supply, we're very excited that that final, that, that supply of water is now online. We've been receiving that at our sixteen-twenty-six pump station, about one point seven million gallons per day coming in from the Arwa line. We also have the Green Valley Agreement, which we were able to negotiate and add another six hundred and fifty-two thousand gallons per day through that agreement. We're also recommending we cancel some of the sharing agreements that we had with Buda now that the Arwa's online. So altogether, we have approximately three million gallons more per day of water than we had last year. That is a significant achievement of the staff and all the planning that's been done over the last several years.
Ryan, just real quick, since we went to stage two, did we change our signs throughout the city?
Yes, sir. We are doing that. It's, in fact, I saw some of those just yesterday. I think there's still a few that still need to be changed out. They're all over the city. But yes, sir, we are doing that. The sixteen-twenty-six take point site, you've seen the, the large infrastructure that's been built there. That's almost complete, but we still have more work to do to, to finalize that by the end of twenty-six. The AMI water meter changeout that I mentioned to you, we expect to have that completed later this year, and we'll have a complete launch of all of that. And then as we brought to you just a few weeks ago, the GBRA Water Secure Partnership, that helps increase supply even further moving forward, and that will water hopefully will be available by twenty-thirty-five. Moving on into transportation and public works, we have a pavement management program. We've been looking at all of our streets, rehabilitating, resurfacing lanes. You've seen a lot of that work around the city over the last few weeks. We've got more to go this year. I mentioned to you BB West and Kohler's. We did have the groundbreaking on that. That is under construction. Marketplace Avenue, hopefully, everybody will be able to come out for that. But next week, on the thirty-first, we will have the ribbon cutting for that roadway. Well, that will be our first roadway that is officially opened from the twenty-twenty-two bond program. So we're really excited to see that. And then we have a number of roundabouts, three in particular at Benner and Kohler's, Sanders and Cromwell, all in the Kohler's corridor. All of those projects are expected to be under construction by December. This is the year of construction. We're going to have a lot of that. So moving into some of the water and wastewater projects, I wanted to talk about these a little bit more. You've, you've seen this graphic to the right, but this is our aquifer storage and recovery system. Again, this is time where you could take water in good years, which this is one of those good years, where we have more water than we have demand. We could be pushing that into the aquifer and then bringing it out when we needed it for peak flows or for areas that, or times when we had droughts and, and less water availability. But we have moved forward with that, and we started the early works program on that. I mentioned to you the SCADA system upgrades and replacement. And then the wastewater treatment plant is a very large project that's, that's incredibly important to the city. We've already started that. We are at four and a half MGD is the capacity of the plant right now. We're going to six MGD by August of next year. So just one year from today, we'll be having that operational and ready to move forward. And then the second phase of that project to go to nine MGD will be done by August of twenty-eight. of '28. One thing I wanted to really mention to the council too is, is all of the other improvements, other than just the, the capacity of the plant, there's other improvements that are being done to beautify that area and make sure we're a good neighbor to the neighborhoods out there. A masonry wall will be constructed around the entire plant to provide good screening. We'll also have a landscaping buffer around the plant to provide good screening to the neighborhood. If you haven't seen the access road that we're building out there, we will have, be having a ribbon cutting for that in the near future too. It's a road to provide access for trucks to the plant, which is normally not something that's to get too excited about, but this will divert all of that traffic out of the neighborhood and back into Hayden Rock Road. So we're really excited to be able to have that road completed and be able to get all that truck traffic off of the major residential streets. And as Mike Murphy mentioned before, at the last meeting, the reclaimed water fill station, we're hopefully going to activate that in the near future and that will provide construction water throughout the community rather than using potable water for that. So lots of things happening in the wastewater area. We're also working on the Alliance Third Water Take Point. This is a critical project to make sure we have the next phase of Arwa water available. We're expecting that to be available in 2027. And then we're looking at the indirect, indirect potable reuse program and that could potentially add up to three M G D by '36 and six by 2041. You'll have many more discussions on that coming forward. And we're also working not only on the generators that we have for the water stations, but for our wastewater list station sites as well. Okay, transportation. This is one that everybody's very excited about, that these projects are moving forward. Some of these will be painful when they're under construction, but we're really excited to get them moving. There's about $359 million in funding in this five-year C I P for 23 road projects. So it's a significant amount of money that we're looking at. So about 89 million for 15 C I P road projects, not related to the road package. I'll give you some of the highlights. As I mentioned before, the roundabouts on Kohler's, those are three significant projects. 25.2 million dollars in funding is provided in this budget to construct those roundabouts. We have $12 million in funding for the Kyle Crossing and Marketplace roundabouts at Kohler's, those two critical intersections. Additionally, we have that railroad overpass going over the railroad on Kohler's. We're funding 7.1 million and we're expecting to get the rest through grants and partnerships. We also have 7.7 million for the Downey and Dacey Roundabout. As you, as you may recall, we have some temporary lights over at that location. This will be to fund the permanent roundabout at that location. And then we have 15.4 million for roundabouts at Dacey and Button and Spring Branch and Burleson. So those are all included in the C I P. And then you can see the other projects that we have from the road bond projects that were approved in '22, about 131 million in this program moving forward.
Brian, just real quick, is the Dacey-Button Roundabout, is that the one that was undersized that's currently there? I guess that's the small one?
Well, this is one that would be, this is one that would be added. It's a, it's a, it's a red light right now. This would be a proposed roundabout at that location.
Okay, so I guess when we're looking at roundabouts, I guess the one that's currently down there, I get a lot of comments.
Cesseta Ranch, are you talking about Cesseta Ranch?
It's the mountain and Gulfport.
It's like when the buses are going through that, it's almost, looks like it's going to go past or fall out.
Right, I believe that one's being expanded as part of the road package in Trimble, if that's incorrect. Yeah, so that's going to be expanded and widened a little bit. It isn't, that is a narrow roundabout. I think roundabouts are very effective if they're designed properly and so I think that one is narrow.
Okay, just want to keep it in our mind.
No, absolutely, thank you. All right. We're just flying, only 80 or 90 slides left. Okay. Pick up the pace, keep moving. Okay. Some more things on roads that I wanted to mention to you. We do have quite a bit of funding in place for road preservation and maintenance. 1.5 million dollars is included in this year's budget for road maintenance. That is significantly more than what we had a few years ago and it's based on our pavement condition study that we did, that what they call a P C I study. It's designed to keep the, the quality of the roads at about 82.5. We also have funding in, in this budget for sidewalks, about, about a million dollars, 966,000 for sidewalk improvements and 4.8 million dollars over the five-year program. Of that, about 700,000 is some funding that we have in C I P and 266,000 for our community development block grant fund, C D B G. Some of the sidewalk projects that we're proposing here are Veterans Drive, Kohler's, Philomena, F-150 and Bunton Creek Road. Again, those are all some of the gaps that we identified in that sidewalk master plan. We also have funding of $750,000 for our fleet management implementation and transition. One of the things that we've been working on is how to better manage that operation. We've brought on a new fleet manager and looking, trying to get away from having all of our vehicles leased. So this is a transitional plan to move us into where we can cash fund that and have a vehicle replacement program moving forward. Again, about $750,000 in a variety of different areas here. Vibe Trail is also one of the things that we've been working on in our infrastructure program to make sure we build this out in accordance with the plan. You can see to the right, the overall plan, all of these are in yellow of the vibe trail components. All of our road bond projects have a vibe trail component, so those will be constructed. Right now, we have about 16 miles of trails through the city and over the next five years, about another 30 miles will be added. And under, of that, about 8.98 miles will be under construction this coming year. And you can see all the various segments here. So again, as I mentioned to you, the Kohler's to Seton, Old Stagecoach Road, all of those will be part of those projects and you'll start seeing these, this, this trail system really come to life in this coming year. So we're excited about that. One other thing we wanted to, to make mention to the, to the council and the public is our wireless transmission facilities that we've been working on. These are the cell phone towers that we've worked on for the past several months to come up with a plan. On the right-hand side of this, this graphic, you can see the existing mobile coverage that we have. And if it's red or yellow, it's bad. So all of the city limits you can see is not very good on cell phone coverage. I think we all experienced that driving around town. You have calls that get dropped or you can't get good signals. That's what our current coverage looks like. We're proposing three new sites be developed for cell phone coverage. And on the right, you can see with those three sites, how coverage will be improved. Lot more greens, lot more shades of, of green on this. It's not perfect, but it will have a tremendous benefit on the community. We estimate about 58,000 residents will see improvement in their cell phone coverage out of that, which is great. It's great to have the coverage, but it's also a revenue opportunity for us as well. So you can see the 30-year projected lease revenue that we're showing, 4.3 million dollars over this 30-year period by these three sites alone. So that's a capital project that we've been able to pay for by doing these transmission facility towers, which is great, but it's also the service. So it's a true win-win for the community. We expect these to be up and running in the next nine to 10 months. So we're excited about that. I can tell you're all excited too. You look very excited.
And that's only, that's only cell phone communication, right? Not video surveillance? What is that?
That's cell phone communication, yes, sir.
Yeah, and the beauty of it is we'll be able to make calls from anywhere in town without Wi-Fi.
That's right. And we do have other locations that we're looking at as well. There's still some areas on the west side of the city that need some better coverage. They're continuing to look for opportunities to partner with communication companies. All right, that's the biggest one. So now to the safe and welcoming community aspect of the strategic plan. The police department is a huge component of our community being safe and for that reason, we've been working with Chief Barnett and his team for the last several months to put together this budget. As you may recall, we did the matrix staffing study back in 2024. That was a comprehensive look at our staffing levels and the service demands that we had and gave us a blueprint over the next several years for what that should look like. I mentioned to you before, the meet and confer agreement was approved in June by the council and that provides that competitive compensation and a few other things for the department and the city. It was a great partnership and we're excited to bring this a three-year agreement. We've also had increased community engagement. The department and the city have been working to really have better outreach, better recognition programs, transparency for all the things that we do. We've seen a lot of really great community feedback on that. People really like to see that. We've also created the mental health dashboard. It's a new dashboard that's completed in 2025. It helps make sure that people are getting the right services and that we're sending people that can actually help someone rather than always an officer. Sometimes it's the mental health team that goes out and helps an individual rather than just an officer. And our response times for priority one calls, these are our most serious, most pressing calls. We're very proud to see that our response rate is really strong at 5.76 minutes. So that's very strong. Anything under six minutes is excellent. So where are we headed? We have several new programs that we're proposing in this budget. These are the ones, many of these were outlined by Chief Barnett in his presentation, I believe back in June or late May. The first of those is recommending a drone program be created. This would be a drone for $150,000. This would be launched from the public safety center. When there is an incident, it would fly directly to that scene, provide real-time information to the officers as they're going to that area. So we're really excited. It's a brand-new technology. I think this would be the first in central Texas to have this technology deployed. There's one other that, that beat us by a few months up in North Texas to be the first in Texas, but we're excited to bring this forward. We hope this will provide, you know, it's something that can be very quickly to the scene to provide critical information, to get the right first responders to it as our, as our team is en route. So it's a service to the community. We're also proposing.
Brian, can we just make sure that over the course of the next couple of months that we're advancing that directive on trying to create policy around the surveillance?
Yes, sir.
Issue?
Yeah, I, I know that's important to the council. We, the chief and I are working on that policy and we'll be bringing that back to you. So before this will be purchased, you'll have an opportunity to look at that policy.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We're also proposing the, the new K-9 unit be created that the chief had mentioned to you. We're also proposing a new emergency management planner position be included in this budget. And we also have, excuse me, funding for the new, I need a little bit more coffee. We're also proposing that we have funding to install some of our emergency sirens. We've went through a process to evaluate what type of technology needs to be there, what are the right locations that's expected to be completed in the next month or two by that consultant. And then this budget includes funding to actually begin implementing those sirens, is $150,000 for that. So you'll see those in the future. We also have funding for the fleet management of, of the police department. There's a position to help be a technician that's being added to help provide support there. And then last, but certainly not least, animal services. We are proposing that this be a new budget outside of the police department with a new director level position. This will be a mid-year add as we're building our new animal services building. This will be a position that we bring in to help us finalize that and then set up our own program moving forward. So these are some of the numbers that you can see. Again, 150,000 for drone safety, $150,000 for the emergency alert sirens. And then you have the three positions, the police K-9 officer and, and the K-9 itself, 136,000, the emergency management planner, the fleet technician and the director of animal services. The meet and confer agreement was also 1.2 million dollars, a very substantial investment that we made in this police department this year. So altogether, a new investment of about 1.9 million dollars for this coming year for the police department. So we're, we're happy to bring that forward to you and share that with you. All right, next up, vibrant and fun destination. I'm going to do my best to make it fun. All right, all right. I know it's still early. All right, so from planning to progress, again, lots of things that we've been doing, work behind the scenes to get us to the moment where we're ready to spring forward into actually delivering projects. And these are significant items that we've had. The Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, the PROS Plan, we did approve, the council approved that in May of '25. That will give us a 10-year roadmap of how we're going to be building out our park systems. It's very important. The council also adopted the Sportsplex Master Plan in July '25. We'll be working on implementing that. Many of you attended the Republic Drive Facility. We're really proud to have that ribbon cutting earlier this month and provides a great facility for the Parks Department to have as they're expanding their operation and also has some community space out there as well. The mobile library, we did have that ribbon cutting in May of '25 and it's been going around the community, serving lots of residents in lots of different ways. You'll see it next week if you haven't had a chance at the ribbon cutting for Marketplace. We're also working on the Public Art Master Plan. That will, the public comment will close, looks like it closes on 28th, so just next week. And that will help us guide what those public art pieces are going to be. The library master plan is also underway. We expect that later this year. And then the Lake Kensington Master Plan is underway. That design consultant's been selected and we expect to complete that early next year. So lots of different things to, to manage projects, to make sure we're putting the right dollars in the right areas. We're also working on the 1500 Dacey Lane Facility Design. That is underway. We expect those bids to come back in the next couple of months. Construction is expected in September and we hope to open that facility and have a great ribbon cutting on that one. I know that will be a well-deserved ribbon cutting for the council in January of '26 and for the community. Just this past week, we cut the ribbon on the Lake Kyle Fitness Court. We had a lot of folks out there. That was a really great time for the community to see that. And then we have many different projects underway for '24, '25. There's a lot of those in parks. You know about the Allwells Skate Park that we're doing, that we're excited to bring that forward. Lake Kensington. And we have a number of improvements at Steeplechase and Waterleaf. We'll have ground breakings or, excuse me, ribbon cuttings for those playgrounds, most likely in the August timeframe. Looking for David, there he is in the back, August.
All right, I just want to thank staff and, you know, council for bringing this fitness court to Lake Kyle. I was, you know, I was wrong and I thought it wasn't, it wouldn't work, it wouldn't fit. But I noticed the ribbon cutting and a lot of people enjoy it, so that was really great to see. So thank you for bringing that. It's a really nice project.
Thank you, council member. It was great to see.
When I'm wrong, I'll own it, so I was wrong about that, that one.
Great. We had a great fitness challenge out there between police and fire and I, I didn't even want to get on the fitness court at the same time those guys were there. Very impressive. So where we're headed, even more things planned for parks and libraries in this coming year. So in this budget, moving forward, we're proposing a new special events coordinator position be included. As you know, our events continue to grow. We have more, more and more of them all the time, which is great for the community, but they are time-consuming. We need some additional support there from the team. We also have some program improvements that are proposed. We're launching the CPR certification and the junior lifeguard training as well as a volunteer engagement program. We're also proposing a recreation services supervisor at the Dacey Facility. So when that facility opens, we're going to need to have someone there that's there to manage the facility and make sure that all of the different events there go off perfectly. In the library system, we're proposing a youth services library position be added for that operation. It's important to continue to move that forward. We have tremendous demand with Leslie's leadership. We're getting lots of use at the library and we want to make sure we have support for that. We also have a technology upgrade. One of the, the biggest areas that we see used in the library is our computers, our public computers, and this will replace all of those computers at that, that center. As I mentioned to you before, earlier in the presentation, we have significant projects underway for parks and recreation, about 96 million in the five-year capital improvement program. And of that, about $30 million is planned for this coming year and these are the projects, Allwells Skate Park, Lake Kensington. Those are two very significant projects that will lead the way for this coming year. But as I mentioned before, there's lots of other things that we're doing and you'll see those improvements going forward individually as we come forward to you. These are some of the renderings to the right of the Allwells Skate Park. Again, very exciting to see a premier facility coming to Kyle like this, so this will be coming in the near future. I have all of the positions and some of the equipment listed for Parks and Recreation here. This, excuse me, and, and libraries. That's $573,000 of investment this coming year in these areas. All right, next up is thriving and prosperous economy. Lots been happening here. The city has grown tremendously over the last three years. We pulled this statistic, I, I thought it was rather staggering. $540 million of private investment just in the last three years, half a billion dollars that's come to our community and about 3,000 new jobs. So we're working very closely with the development community to make sure we bring great projects to Kyle. There's many more coming, but it's really staggering to see that kind of growth. I know we all see it and feel it, you know, just being in the city, but those numbers really bring it to life. Tax increment reinvestment zones, the tourist districts. We did create one new tourist district, tourist number six, which is for downtown and to the area just east of I-35. And we've also expanded tourist number four over on the east side. That will be a partnership with the county. Both of these are partnerships with the county to provide funding. And tourist number four actually provides the funding needed to build Go Fourth Road from the Alliance Facility, Meritage Facility, all the way up into that 150 area. So we're really excited to have that project and that funding mechanism in place. We've had another number of major milestone projects in '24, '25. Sprouts in the retail shops in that area, that groundbreaking was held back in October. We're expecting that to open in the next couple of months. It's really coming along. Roads in that area are almost complete. Nitro Swim, we had the ribbon cutting for that earlier this year as well. And the Plum Creek Technology Park, that groundbreaking was held at the end of May. We also have a number of public-private partnership developments that we're looking at. We have the restaurant concept at Hero's Memorial Park that we've gone out for RFP on, the hotel within the Lake Park District, and an office development with Brick and Mortar. All of those are going through the process, and we'll be coming back to you to see if there's a selection that you'd like to move forward with. We've also moved forward on the small business Kickstart Program and launched a number of different initiatives related to that. And then we're also always focused on efficiency and customer service. We've looked at hiring our inspections and bringing all of those services in-house rather than outsourcing those. Ninety-eight to 100% of their inspections are now completed by city staff, which we believe gives better consistency and better customer service to everyone in that development We also completed the Economic Development Strategic Plan. In October '24, the council approved that, and that provides some long-term goals for us moving forward. Here's some specific projects that meet that plan that was approved. To the right, you can see the urban core that we're proposing as part of Kyle Park. This project is breaking ground this fall over at the Kohlers and BB intersections, just where we broke ground on those roads. So it's really exciting to see this move forward. That's called the Kyle Park District. It's a 100-acre mixed-use development, $250 million project. It's gonna generate about $2.5 million annually in sales tax and $1 million in property taxes every year moving forward. So we're really excited to see that. Brick and mortar district continues to move forward. All of the retail road projects are moving. We do have all of the roundabouts proposed and moving forward in December of this year. And again, that Sprouts ribbon cutting is expected in October. Sportsplex, council just recently approved that Sportsplex Master Plan, and so we'll be moving forward to begin implementing that. I think as we talked about with council, one of the first things we'll be doing is looking at Cromwell Drive and completing the engineering to extend that all the way up to Rickardson, and we'll be working on that, and the contract will be coming back in the next 60 days or so. And some more projects there, just to talk about some of the things that we're doing. Unified Development Code, I mentioned that earlier. That is underway. It's a really important project to make sure that we update our code, modernize the code, make sure it's providing the type of standards that we want across the community. We also are proposing an increase in the home repair program. We talked about this just the other night, Thursday. It's almost like, what day is today? I know we've had a lot of meetings, but Thursday we talked about that. This will propose a $25,000 increase. I know the council gave direction to go ahead and increase that for the current year. This will be the additional $25,000 for next year. And you can see some of the before and after photos of some of the projects that we've done. We're also doing a housing study as well with a company called Housing Works. In the next couple of months, we'll be bringing that back to you to try to get a good inventory of what is our housing in the city, what are the gaps that we have, what are the affordability gaps that we have across the community, and where do we really want to be going with that? What kinds of programs do we need to tie to that? And we also want to work with the newly-appointed Housing Authority Board to have a partnership that really helps us achieve our housing goals moving forward. So that will be coming to you in the near future as well. Downtown redevelopment, this is another area that we wanted to talk about. On the chart on the right, you can see the downtown area. All of the shaded areas in blue are properties that the city now owns. We've acquired these over the last couple, two or three years, and you can see we now have some significant properties in the area for us to try to redevelop. So it's really important for us to start thinking about, well, what should that redevelopment look like? And we're gonna be working with the council over the coming months to solidify that plan. As we talked about during the visioning workshop back in March, one of the things that we really wanted to focus on was the pocket park area in front of City Hall on Front Street, in between, right here in this area on this street, to look at potentially closing that street, creating a plaza and park-like environment there that could be used for lots of different activities for the city. We're also working on the landscaping package on Center Street from downtown all the way back to 35 to tie all those together. Coleman and Associates has been engaged to do that work, and we'll be coming back to you to show you those concepts, get your feedback, and make sure these are headed in the right direction.
Brian, I was making sure we're checking in with historical commission as well for the county and Train Depot, making sure they're in the loop.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure we do that. Those are great points. And, you know, one of the things that I think is an opportunity for the Train Depot in particular is to try to activate that area more with a plaza and a park-like feature out here. So right now, it's cut off from the rest of this block, so we're hoping we can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be a great improvement for, especially maybe generate more families.
Yes, sir. In addition to that, as I mentioned to you, the beautification improvements, the landscaping that we're looking at that park, we're also looking at the Krug Center with the new senior and community center opening up on Dacey Lane. That center will now have a lot more opportunities. So we're looking at what should be the vision for that facility, what's the possibilities for that facility. We've engaged a firm to help us look at that and to look at some Mary Kyle-Hartson improvements, some potential restroom improvements. We'll bring all that back to you in late '25 and have some good discussions about how all of these things work together. Long-term, we're looking at downtown parking solutions, a potential parking garage. That's a funded item as part of the tourist number six. It's one of the elements that we included. We really want to have a partnership with developers in the area and all of our stakeholders in downtown to create a vibrant downtown to redevelop these areas. $1.5 million in funding is planned for these downtown investments annually going forward, and each of those elements will come forward to you so you can provide lots of detailed direction to us. But you do have funding in place to start developing the downtown plan. All right, that's-- Councilmember, did you have a question?
Yeah, what is the budget on the property acquisitions? I guess, is this in addition to property acquisition budget?
It is.
I looked at it in a deep dive. I just wanted to see like how much we have to acquire properties.
So we still have $2 million, and I've lost Prevez. He's back over there. He's hiding back. I've got all the other staff here. But it's $2 million that's included, I believe, in property acquisition moving forward.
What is the new, what is going for the next, I guess, the new amount that we have? We had 20. And we went through most of the 20 this last year with many purchases. So what budget do we have for the next year?
Yes, so going forward, we have $2 million a year. So over the five-year period is $10 million.
About $10 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. Mayor Protem, this might be a good point. If there are any questions on that, we could take a moment to answer those questions. If not, we'll, Prevez will jump into the fund financials and walk you through the rest of these slides.
So we've gone through, it seems like, about 32 slides worth of the budget recommendations. If we want to, like Brian said, jump in with questions, but just remember, we're not taking any votes. We're just trying to give some feedback on thoughts so that they can refine the process for when it comes back to us the next time.
If I could just echo that a little bit to the council, it's important to have good dialogue on all of these things as we're moving forward. When we get to September 16th for your second and final vote on the budget, there should be no surprises for any of you, for staff. We want to make sure we fully vet any proposal, any discussion that you have. If there's something that you want us to look at, we'd love to work on getting that information together for you so as a group, you kind of know what the options are available. So to the extent that you have questions or things that you can bring up over today or the next couple of meetings, it'd be very helpful as we're trying to finalize the numbers.
Hey, Brian, just a heads up. We talked in the back, and the group kind of wants to take a break around 10, so just keep that in mind. So just let us know. It doesn't have to be at 10.
No pressure.
Just so all of this can be framed properly.
Good question. I've got a comment I want to make. I really appreciate how you've connected all of our work that we've done so far this year and the coming work to the beginning work at the workshop, council workshop. It's very clear that the goals were set from that workshop and have continued to be advanced, and it's a very cohesive plan. So very understandable. Thank you.
I was gonna say the same thing, Brian. Everything I was looking for, I can find in these slides, like right away. It jumps. I don't have to search back and forth into the books. So thank you for highlighting like all the big points, the points you want us to focus on, and how it's all connected into our next budget. Thank you.
We all worked very hard to do that. I appreciate that feedback. Hopefully, it's easy to follow. He will be coming, he will be coming back, I hope. He likes to make a grand entrance.
Now, I wanted to make sure my phone was off. So Mayor Protem, council members, good morning. For the record, I'm Prevez Mahid, City's Director of Finance. And my portion of the budget presentation is quite intense in terms of numbers, so I'm not gonna move as fast as the city manager did. This way, you'll be able to absorb the different pieces that are moving parts of the budget. And I'm going to do something very different that I've not done in the past. I've always waited till the end for the movie credits. I'm gonna start with the movie credits. So council, before I begin my presentation, I want to take a few minutes to recognize and thank our finance staff who assisted me in the development of the city's operating and capital budgets for next fiscal year. Being a small department, we all wear many hats. So during the budget season, we all pull together our resources to put the budget together for the city, and this year has been no different. This morning, we have five of our finance staff members here present. The sixth one could not make it this morning because of family needs, and I certainly would like to recognize them in front of our city council. So I'm going to, I would like to thank each one of them, even though they know that, but I want to formally thank each one of them, and I want them to know that their contributions are greatly valued and appreciated. Without their hard work, attention to detail, and exceptional knowledge, it would have been difficult to develop the city's budget for next year. As the city's finance director, I'm fortunate to have them on our team, our city team. So as I call their name, I'm gonna ask them to stand up and remain standing. So I'll introduce each one of them to you. The very first one, I think you know him, Andy Alejandro. He's been with the city of Kyle for 18 years. He has been, in the past years, if you've been on the city council, at least in the past 10 years or so, there were only two of us doing the city budget. It was Andy and I. Andy has been a great part of developing the budget model that we use today for the city's budget. Next up, we have Betty Thornblum. She's our senior financial analyst. By the way, Andy's our city controller. City manager recently promoted him. Betty is our senior financial analyst. You may not know her or recognize her face, but you will recognize her name. Each month, she sends you your district budget status report. So that's the Betty that sends those reports to you on a timely basis. Betty has been a great part of the CIP budget development this year. Then we have three new employees that joined our team this year. Mateo Garcia, he's our accounting manager. He has been with the city about three months. He comes to us from the city of, Universal City, just down the highway towards San Antonio. Dylan Thonderson, he's our budget manager. He's been with us three months, too. He comes to us from the city of Plano, Texas. And then, of course, we have Holly Holt Torres. She's our Assistant Director of Finance. She's been here about two months, and she joins us from the big city of Dallas. So on behalf of the city manager, our two assistant city managers, and all the department staff that is represented here this morning, Andy, Betty, Mateo, Dylan, and Holly, please accept a Texas-sized thank you from all of us. So thank you to each one of you for your contributions. So with that, I'm gonna start the budget presentation. Oh, don't leave.
I just want to say something real quick, Perez. When you want to look at the hard work they put in, look at this right here.
Yes, sir. It takes, it takes a lot to put that document together.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. We really appreciate it. I know it's many hours and many days, many months, putting it together. Thank you, Perez, for your team.
Yes, sir.
Very much. Thank you.
So before we get into the budget, I think it's important to spend a little time on understanding how the city's budget structure is put together, what it looks like. So the city, like most other governments in the United States, whether you are in New York, or Chicago, or Dallas, or Austin, or the big city of Kyle, we all use what is called the Fund Accounting System. The Fund Accounting System provides for accountability, transparency, and it designates or separates funds based on public purpose or intent of those funds, how they ought to be used, so they're not commingled with other funds. It allows for separate budgeting, accounting, and financial reporting. On an average fiscal year, the city of Kyle manages anywhere between 50 to 60 separate funds per year. And these funds are broken into three major categories. First, governmental-type funds. These funds are generally used to account for and track tax-supported functions and activities. By that we mean, and a good example would be the city's general fund. This is where we account for our tax-supported, most of our tax-supported activities, police, library, parks, public works, streets, those types of activities. The second category is enterprise funds. These funds are utilized to account for and track cities' business-type activities or commercial-type activities. They're not tax-based activities. They're based on fees and charges for services rendered. A good example would be our water utility system, our wastewater utility system, and drainage utility. And the third type of fund that the city of Kyle uses here is fiduciary-type fund. We have one trust fund that we manage for our employees, for our other post-employment benefits. Each one of these fund categories has its own separate rules, regulations, and requirements how the city must account for, report, and budget. The general fund is accounted for and reported very differently than, let's say, the utility funds. Utility funds are more like a business-type entity, organization, hence the accounting also follows that structure. So here's our roadmap. So we talked about the three types of categories. If you look at the second level of this chart, think of it as an org chart, but this is more for the fund that the city has. And as we move through the presentation, this will make more sense. So I'm trying to help you with the roadmap of what we're gonna talk about today. So under the governmental funds type, and we've color-coded this for-- So, under the governmental funds type, and we've color-coded this for your convenience, all the blue ones are our city's four major operating funds. And we'll definitely talk about those today, each one of those. The yellow are the capital improvement project funds that we're gonna briefly cover. And the green are some of the other funds that we will not specifically cover, but they're part of the budget. Fifty-two percent of our next year's budget is going to be accounted for and reported and budgeted within the governmental-type funds. Forty-eight percent is going to be accounted for and budgeted under the proprietary-type funds. I've only shown you about 26, just to give you a sample of what it looks like. We have, right now, we have about 56 funds. Going next year, it'll be close to 60 funds, separate funds. And that's why young people are not getting into the governmental accounting business as much. So, let's talk about the proposed budget. City Manager talked about the total overall budget of $603,537,633. How is that divided up? So, if you look at the largest pie, the slice of the pie, is our CIP program for next year. That is 76% of the total proposed or city manager's recommended budget. $460 million. The second-largest slice of the pie is general fund at $75 million, or 12.5%. The third is water utility at $28 million, 4.7%. Fourth is debt service for next year, $23.2 million. And let me pause here real quick on the debt service. Debt service next year is about $30 million. Because the enterprise funds are accounted for differently than the governmental-type funds, without getting too technical, the debt service portion of the enterprise fund is accounted for within water and wastewater funds. So, those numbers already include the portion of the debt service for next year under water and wastewater numbers. So, this number on the, under debt service is for governmental-type funds, mostly tax-supported debt repayments. So, that was number four. And number five is wastewater utility expenditures for next year at $11 million. So, that makes the, the total pie for next year's recommended, city manager's recommended budget. So, here are some highlights of what's included in that. A lot of this, the city manager has gone over, so I'll go over quickly. $603.5 million total proposed budget for all city funds. Of that, $460.4 million in planned CIP spending just in 2026, just one year. And we'll go over in a minute what the five-year window looks like. $1.3 billion over the five-year CIP spending plan. Twenty-four new positions proposed for a total of 470 positions next year. Property tax rates, we're still awaiting the calculations from Hayes County Tax Assessor. But I can, when we get into the tax section of our discussion, I'll give you a broad brush of what these certified tax rule looks like that we received just Thursday afternoon. We haven't had too much time to delve into it. Rate increases for water and wastewater service in '26, we'll go over those. It varies by customer class, whether inside city or outside city. The recommended budget includes change in storm drainage fees, we'll go over that. Based on the city's contract with Texas Disposal System for the collection of solid waste services or providing solid waste services, there is a 2.5% rate increase for next year. The city manager already covered the impact fees, which is being finalized and will be presented to you for your approval shortly. So, let's talk about, real quick, the 24 new positions. Where are they? Which departments are being recommended to receive those 24? A total of 51 new positions were requested by various city departments. The city manager went through each department's priorities of all their supplemental budget requests. And these are the ones that made the final list for recommendation to city council. The other thing I want to mention that, if you look at the fourth column, which is the full-year amount, has an asterisk above it. We are, for transparency purposes, we're showing you full-year cost of these positions. However, in the budget, in the city manager's recommended budget, we're funding these positions for six months. We're assuming that these positions will begin April 1st. And HR, Rosie and her team will be our gatekeepers to make sure the departments don't pull a fast one. So, for Administrative Services Department, city manager's recommending a total of two positions, a procurement specialist, safety compliance officer. To the far right of this schedule, you will, I have tried to show you how these positions will be funded. What is the source of funding for these positions? Animal Services Director for City Attorney's Office, an Assistant City Attorney for Library Services Department, a youth services librarian. For Parks and Rec, a total of two positions, a recreation services supervisor, and a special events coordinator. For Police Department, a total of three positions, emergency planner, fleet technician, and a canine officer. For our Transportation and Public Works Department, a total of seven positions are being recommended by the city manager, two project managers, two project coordinators, one engineer, one cat and design engineer tech, one facilities maintenance supervisor. And finally, for the Water Utilities Department, also a total of seven positions, wastewater treatment plant operator, lead water production operator, backflow technician, assistant wastewater treatment plant operator, a division manager for water quality, instrument control technician, and a water wastewater lab technician. These 24 positions, on a full-year basis, with everything included, their base wages, their payroll taxes, their health insurance, their retirement, fully loaded, is $2.8 million. However, as I mentioned earlier, the budget only includes funding for six months. So, that was overall, cities for all funds. Now, we're gonna get into the four major operating funds. Our four major operating funds are general fund, water utility fund, wastewater utility fund, and storm drainage fund. So, I'll walk you through what's in their total budget. I will also cover the rate studies and the rate results, what is being recommended for next year. But before we get into it, we start our budget process with a five-year financial forecast. We've always done it, we continue to do it. And here are the reasons why we do financial forecasts. Financial forecast is an essential part of the annual budget process to help with budgetary decision-making. Because we wanna know whatever we are going to do in year number one, which is next year, how will that impact us in years two, three, four, and five? The purpose of the financial forecast is to evaluate current and future fiscal conditions to help guide policy and management decisions. A financial forecast is a fiscal management tool that presents estimated information based on past. Past is our two actual years, how we're doing this year, our current, and then projected financial conditions based on a set of assumptions that we have assumed going forward. So, for general fund, this may sound familiar to you and look familiar because I was before you on May 31st. And we talked about the preliminary financial forecast for the general fund at that time. And I also said that we will be fine-tuning this forecast as the city manager's budget is finalized because that sets the cornerstone for year number one, and everything flows from it. So, we have tweaked some of those numbers, we have refined some of those numbers. So, I wanted to, and the city manager wanted to make sure that we update city council on the most recent financial forecast. One of the things that we have noticed, and we are noticing, that there is a slight slowdown in our local economy, just like our national economy. We have seen a slowdown in permits. We have seen a slowdown in the number of project plans coming through for review. We have seen a slowdown in collection of property tax revenues. And certainly, we have seen a slowdown on sales tax collections.
Why do you say slowdown in collecting taxes? What does that mean? Is it, there are fewer taxes to collect? Or there's a problem in the process of collection?
No, there is no problem in collection of taxes. It's just like your personal checkbook. When things get tight, people try to allocate funds where it's more critical that they need, right? Shelter, food.
So, it's the payment timelines?
Right.
Okay, understood.
They're extending their payment time. So, we've noticed that. We will get the taxes, it's just the timing will be slightly different. So, for property valuation growth, we typically assume about 10% in a good year. We've tapered it back to 7%. And I'll show you in a minute what the property tax rules came in at. Next year is 7%. By year number three, we're expecting us to start recovering. And then, back in year four and five, we're at our usual 10% growth factor. Sales tax, we have typically looked at between 10% and 12% a year annual growth. We have tapered that back to 9% for the next two years, and then back to 10% in years three through five. Development revenue, we are assuming zero increase in the next two years, and then slightly growing it back from 5% to 7% in year number four and five. Other revenues, these are municipal court revenues, library revenues, interest income, those types of things. It's pretty safe to assume it'll be around 5%. The general fund transfer from water and wastewater utilities, I wanna take a couple of minutes to explain this to you. We're doing something different next year. And we covered this in my May 31st presentation as well. So, in the past, including the current year, there was a flat $650,000 transfer from the water utility to the general fund, and another $650,000 from wastewater utility to the general fund. Because had they been a private utility, they would have paid us property tax, franchise tax, those types of. So, it's in lieu of taxes, that, that general fund transfer. $650 each in the current year. So, both of them took, put together, they pay $1.3 million a year to the general fund. We're changing that, starting next fiscal year, to it to be more aligned with industry practice, which is a percentage of gross revenue. So, next year, starting next year, the general fund transfer will be based on 8% of gross revenue of water and wastewater. And it stays the same in the five-year period. So, if you're wondering what that delta is, the current methodology brings in about $1.3 million between the two. The new methodology will bring $3.3 million to the general fund. So, that's an increase of about $2 million each year, roughly. Now, moving on to the expenditure side of assumptions that we used in our five-year forecast, operations and maintenance, we're keeping it steady at 5%. Meet and confer, as city manager mentioned, in the first year is $1.2 million. And then, we're growing that at 3.5% each year. Healthcare costs, we're assuming 10% increase. And then, cash-funded CIP, we have tapered back the first two years to help with the fund balance, to help with the operating cost increases, and to help with the offset, the reduction in revenues. We're picking it back up in year number three, four, and five. So, if I had to summarize the three takeaways for you on the assumptions, one, we're recognizing the slight slowdown in our local economy in '26 and '27. We're assuming that will begin recovery in late '27 and '28. And we're planning ahead to mitigate the economic impact of that slowdown in our five-year forecast. So, what does the forecast looks like? I know it's a busy slide. So, let me give you the framework of how this slide works. So, starting from the left side is the description of those items. Moving to the right, we start with the approved budget for the current year, the fiscal year that we're almost finishing. What is our best estimate, how are we gonna finish that year? Because that feeds into the first year of the proposed budget. Year number one now reflects what the city manager is recommending to city council in the budget document. And then, based on those assumptions that I just went over, years two, three, four, and five are forecasted. Our forecast model has a little over 8,000 lines. So, I'm trying to consolidate those into one page for you. So, rather than going through each line, since we've already discussed that on May 31st, to save some time today, I will highlight line number 16, the estimated fund balance for the general fund. If you look at the fund balance, at the end of each fiscal year, it ranges anywhere from year number one, $20.3 million, to year number five, $24.9 million. These are pretty healthy fund balance reserves. And each one of these years, we have ensured that the fund balance exceeds the city council and the city charter's policy to maintain at least 25% of our expenditures in reserves. So, the three takeaways here in the final forecast is preservation of fund balance over the five-year forecast period. We're pulling back on cash funding of CIP. And you will see later on that there is a cost to doing that because we will now have to finance more of it, right? Just like when you put down money on your home or your car, depending on how much you wanna do equity financing. And then, three, we're targeting in our five-year forecast And then three, we're targeting in our five-year forecast, a positive year-over-year, every single year, a positive and in excess of minimum required for the fund balance. So that's, that's good news. So that's the five-year forecast. That's the underlying foundation to begin working on the budget. Yes, ma'am?
Would you go back one slide, please? So the cash funding of the CIP, we've been doing, the next two years, we're proposing not to do any cash funding of the CIP, but we are increasing the fund balance, especially it's at 25.62% for the end of this year. So how are we going to, we're going to use general obligation bonds for the funding for the CIP, so in the next two years?
Yes, so I'll show you in a minute what our five-year forecast is for our CIP program, and I will also show you to what extent we will be financing those. Roughly, in the five-year window, anywhere between 90% to 95% of our CIP spending plan will be financed either to GO, CO, TERS, depending on what projects, developer reimbursements, development fees, fees, park development fees, impact fees, so combination of those. I hope that helps answer you.
It does, and you'll explain to us a little bit more clearly then about the required, the formula for debt financing and where we stand on that.
Yes. So now we're going to get into the proposed or recommend, city manager's recommended budget for general fund. We'll share with you at a very high level, the summary highlights for general fund for next year. So general fund, the revenues and transfers in total $78.5 million. Expenditures and transfers out total $77.5 million. And if you'll notice, it is a structurally balanced budget that we're proposing for next year. The estimated ending fund balance is at 20.3 million. 1.2 million is included for meet and confer for sworn police officers, a total of 16.3 new positions proposed, and some of those will be offset, and I'll show you with CIP funds that the city manager talked about. A complete list of all new positions is provided for you in the proposed budget document. So the, the next slide is to show you the sources of funds coming into the general fund. What are the major sources of funds that fund are general government activities, police, library, public works, those types of things. So we said a total of 78.5 million, how is that broken up? So if you look at this pie graph or chart, the number one source of revenue now is sales tax in the proposed budget. It has always been property tax. And when we get into property tax, I'll talk about why is that. While the sales tax is good, it's a good source of revenue, one thing to keep in mind, sales tax revenue is a very volatile source of revenue. Yes, ma'am?
Quick question. On the property tax revenue, is general fund the only place that shows up, or does it show up in any of the other funds?
So it shows up in two places.
Okay, thank you.
The maintenance and operation portion of the property tax revenue comes into general fund. The INS or the debt portion of the tax revenue is separated and accounted for in a debt service fund, so it's not co-mingled with the operations of the city. So number one is sales tax is 28%, $22.2 million projected for next year. Neck and neck with that is property tax revenue at 21.7 million or 28%. The difference between sales tax and projected property tax is roughly about $500,000. The number three source of revenue next year for general fund is from transfers in. These are multiple sources. We just talked about the general fund transfer from the utilities. We're also doing indirect cost allocation that will be, the general fund will be reimbursed by other funds, water fund, wastewater fund, CIP funds, for the support services it provides to those major operating funds. And by support services, I mean city manager's office cost, city attorney's cost, human resources, everything that's common to all city departments, finance, purchasing, IT, those types of things.
Leon, is this is going to be the first time that we could collect more sales tax and property tax in the city's history?
Yes, since I've been here.
I remember getting on the council in 2019, and we weren't even close to this. This is a big win for the city.
So that's, in a nutshell, the sources of funds for the general fund. Next up is the uses. Where does this money go? And how will this, what are we planning for the use of these funds next year? There are a number of slices here, a whole bunch of slices here, so I won't go through all of them. The total expenditures and transfers out planned next year is 77.5 million. The number one source, use of our general fund dollars is public safety at 26% or 20.4 million. Number two is transportation and public works at 18%, 13.9, the mustard yellow slice of the pie. Number three is to your right, parks and recreation at 9.7 million or 13%. Number four is IT at 5.2 million or 7%. And if you notice, finances, eh, 4%.
Got a question on this, too. On animal services, that's a very small slice of the pie, but does that budget amount include the new animal services center, or will that be in the next year's budget?
So the animal services department, this is the operating portion of that department. The CIP budget will show you what their, the project managers are planning to, to forecast over the five-year window.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add a little bit to that. So as we build that facility, there'll be additional staff that will be needed, so those will be in future years. So you'll, you'll see some of them.
Hey, Brian, given that there are, still are many questions unanswered in regard to what the partnership's going to look like, the financial arrangement timeline for building, like how are we forecasting these costs? Because, I mean, it's not, the, the numbers that would be required to build this facility and operate it are much larger than a lot of these numbers we see right here on our screen. So I mean, how are we kind of taking in all those unknown variables right now?
So we, we have those numbers, and on August 5th, we're going to be presenting to you a proposed memorandum of understanding that we would consider with the county to help jointly fund some of those costs. So we'll detail those for you and show you how we came up with the formula.
Okay, thank you.
Jesse, did you have anything else? I know you were...
I was just going to say, Mayor Protim, to answer your question in out years, we have the capital costs outlined for the 10 million, I think, is what we have for the building itself. The, that'll be design and construction, which takes us into 2027, and to the city manager's point, we won't need to put operating costs for that building into the budget this year, it will be in subsequent years, most likely 2027 and 2028 to ramp up for when we're opening the building.
So that was the expenditure side. Here's the overall fund summary for general fund. There is some minimum amount of information that staff is required to present to city council, and this captures that. So I want to make sure that I give you the information that is at least minimum required by city charter. So the template, it is set up, if you look at the top, we are providing you two actual fiscal year revenue and expenditure information. Moving to the right, we have the approved budget, then current year estimate, how are we going to finish, what it looks like, our best estimate at this point. Then we have the city manager's proposed or recommended budget for next fiscal year. And then the last two columns are the difference between approved budget and the proposed budget, dollar and percentage. So we've already gone over the total revenues and expenditures, so I'm going to highlight line 14, line 16 for you, for next year, the estimated ending fund balance, which is the difference between beginning balance, revenues, minus the expenditures and transfers out. So what is our net balance at the end of the fiscal year for the fund balance? It is $20.3 million. If we follow the 25% minimum required balance, it's calculated at 18.8 million, it's shown on line 17, under the city manager's proposed budget column. That is 1.5 million dollars roughly above the minimum. So it gives us a good cushion for any changes that might happen during the fiscal year, or if we see a slight reduction in our forecast on revenue side.
Prevez, does that minimum balance, is that dictated but just by city charter, but also is that dictated by state requirements?
It's not in the state, it's more specific to our city.
City charter, thank you.
It's also a rating agency from, from the credit markets. When the rating agencies are looking at that, they, they do like to see a healthy fund balance, too.
So let's talk about property tax rates, and I'll share with you some, some very limited statistics. We don't have all of it here together for you, but we'll begin with the current property tax, taxes in Kyle. So if you're a homeowner in Kyle, these are the taxing jurisdictions that show up on your property tax bill. The three largest slices of the pie belong to, number one, Hays CISD, is that 51%? Number two, City of Kyle, our current tax rate is 46.93. And number three is the county, Hays County. Hays County actually has two slices, so you have to kind of add the two. You have the Hays County general fund tax, and then the Hays County up top is Hays County road tax, which is about 2%. And then you'll see Austin Community College, ESD 9, Plum Creek Conservation District, Plum Creek Groundwater District, those are the other, ACC, Austin Community College are the other jurisdictions. So if you add everybody, every entity's tax rate for City of Kyle, it currently adds up to 2.25544 per $100 of assessed valuation. Okay, so this is our tax rate history chart or graph that we have shared with you over It starts in 1990. Our highest tax rate so far was in 1992, a total of 69.26 cents. Our lowest tax rate over this spectrum was in 2008, right in the center, at about 16.27%.
Hey, Prevez, do you have any context as to why the tax rate was so high in '92? Like what led to that?
Our, it's a combination of factors. One was our assessed valuation, we're low in those days, we had debts, debt obligations to pay at the time. So it's a combination of those things and operating requirements.
But do you have any idea what those debt obligations were? Was it like infrastructure? Was it like, what was the, what was the reason why the tax rate was raised? I know it was a long time ago, so I don't expect you necessarily, but I'm just a little bit curious, given it's the closest comparison, well, one of the closest comparisons to where we're going to be at in the upcoming year.
So if you look at that 1992 bar, the blue represents MNO, and the gold represents So there was more on the operating requirement side that they needed to recover through the property tax rates than the debt. But together, it was 69 cents. Small city, small valuation, higher tax rate to recover, the dollar amount needed. And they probably didn't have as much water and wastewater revenues at that time. We did not have general fund transfer until 2011.
I just, you know, in the past couple of years, talking to people who've been here a lot longer than I have, have shared, you know, just some stories on how the city for a long time was lowering tax rates instead of investing in infrastructure, eh, you know, roads, water, wastewater expansion. So I'm just, you know, kind of curious to see kind of what these peaks and valleys are in the tax rate and what's led to them.
Without doing research, I really don't have a definite answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering if that could have been a year where the population just exploded, where we got new subdivisions in. I'm not sure when Plum Creek and all those areas were around.
You had infrastructure coming in.
Lot of, lot of the neighborhoods were being developed, so maybe that's their thinking, I'm, I'm assuming.
The other thing is you had less people distribute that debt on, so it was higher. But if you look at all the infrastructure improvements we're going to do, we're still below that line, and we're going to do way more in infrastructure this year, coming years.
So I do want to emphasize on this graph, the last two bars for '25 and '26. So in '25, the current year, our tax rate is set at 46.93. If you recall, the city's financial advisor and bond council and staff presented options for council to consider for tax rate management options. There were three options discussed at that time, and council chose the second option, which was to bring up the tax rate for the GO bonds all the way up to what was shared with the public that would cost, which was 59.9 cents. And then in addition to, we had some other projects that needed debt financing. So combination of those two, the financial advisor's tax rate impact analysis showed that the race, the existing rates would have to be estimated. These are all estimates, mind you. These are not rock solid numbers unless council tells the city manager, thou shall not increase more than X. These are all floating at this time. So on April 1, the city's financial advisor's best estimate was 61.71. What needs to be clearly understood, and I don't want this to be, I'll spend as much time you need, their projections only covered the yellow part of the bar. If you remember, property tax rate has two components. Maintenance and operation, what does the city need or is allowed by state law? Maintenance and operation, what does the city need, or is allowed by state law, without a voter election, how much it can raise for MNO taxes. The other component is your debt levy, or how much do you need to recover from property taxes to pay your annual debt service for the next coming year? So they were showing you that if you were to increase the property tax rate for general fund or property tax for debt, for the GO component, for the road bonds, all the way to what the voters were told, 59.9 cents, that the debt component would at least have to be increased to 328 from currently at 1804. They did not assume the MNO portion moving. They, in their analysis, they kept the MNO constant. So we now have the certified tax rolls. We are going to ask the Hays County Tax Assessor to run through their certified tax rate calculations and spit out what the tax rates will be. It may be lower than 61, it may be higher than 61. I don't want to speculate that. We will talk in great detail on August 19 about the tax. But I just want to focus, draw your attention to that, that is, 6171 is an estimate, the best estimate the city's financial advisors had on April 1, or at that time.
I've got a question. That is above the tax that is voter authorized at this point?
We don't know that yet.
Well, we have a voter authorized.
So, okay.
Amount, percentage.
For the GO bonds? Or are you talking about, at what tax rate do we have to go to the voters?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't know that yet. We don't know at this point what our voter approval tax rate is, the maximum you can go up to without triggering the election.
Okay.
We'll be providing that information to you in detail at the August 19 meeting. So that second meeting, you'll see all that with all those calculations. It's a good question. The other thing I was going to mention to you is, the discussion we had with council in April was how to minimize the long-term impacts on the tax rate. So we have this one-year snapshot of '25, '26, which is important, but the council looked at what was the best strategy to manage costs over the long term. And so by raising it more this first year, you minimize what that cost is going to be in the future. That's kind of the discussion that we had, was trying to minimize what that, the rate could continue to grow up in the out years if you didn't make that change this year. So I just want to remind everyone of that.
Thanks.
Well, if I'm looking at this graph right, and I'm going to try and probably oversimplify it, the blue is basically our service to the city, right? And then the gold and the yellow is our payment on debt.
That's correct.
And so it looks like we're just trying to maintain the same level of services without having to cut anything, and then still pay the debt that we've taken on, bless you. And that's what's leading to the spike.
That's the assumption that was made at that time, that they did not consider what the city's MNO may be shifting to and how much we would be allowed to raise from property tax. They focused on the debt service component, the yellow part of the bar.
That debt service component is directly related to services that we're providing to the community, such as the road bonds that are now coming on, that we're having to draw that money now. You know, the bonds were issued, but we don't draw that money all the time. So we start paying interest when we start drawing that money, actually. So this is a direct result of all of this construction we're going to start seeing.
Some of it is in advance. We're drawing that tax rate in advance.
So we're paying it, but it's still paying off that.
For the GO, for the GO road bonds. Yes, you're correct. So this is a comparison of our current property tax rates with our neighboring cities, the 10 cities that we compare ourselves to. Lowest on this graph is Buda. We don't know what their tax rates will be next year, so this is just a snapshot of right now, current tax rates of each city. And on the other side of the spectrum, a city of San Marcos at 60 cents. We're almost in the middle at number seven position compared to these other cities. This slide shows the valuation, assessed valuation per capita for these same cities. So of course, Austin will be, because they're so large, their assessed valuation, so huge per citizen or per resident, it is a higher number than a smaller city with a smaller assessed valuation. And hence, that's why you see Kyle on the far left side more so than on the right side. So if you have cities that have higher assessed valuations and smaller populations, they will be more to the right.
Profess, if I could just jump in and make a point, I think these two slides are always interesting in, I would suspect if you lined up 100 residents and asked them what our tax rate was, most couldn't tell you, if not all 100 couldn't tell you. But they know what they pay, right? Everybody knows what you pay. How much taxes is it that you pay? That's really, the tax rate times the value question is really the important thing, is how much do you pay in your tax bill? I think this shows you why the tax rate itself, measured against all these other cities, is not really the same calculation. So the Buda is an example, even though their tax rate is lower, their assessed value per capita is much larger. So that tax rate times that assessed valuation leads to a higher tax bill on average than what a Kyle resident pays. So we were trying to pull all those numbers together for you. We'll have that at a later presentation, so you can see an average homeowner and see kind of where you rank. It's a much different calculation of what do you pay rather than what the rate is. It's all about assessed value times the rate gives you a levy, and that's the missing element that we don't have here on this slide. So I want to make sure that's clear. It's, again, tax rates are just tax rates. What do you pay is the real question.
Yeah, that's important, because, you know, when you look at it, you're looking at, you're distributing more of your infrastructure needs through less people, so that's why the rates are so high. So if you're building roads or your city services, everything else, it's less people paying for those. So that's why the evaluations as well are higher, because there's less product, too. So there's a lot of components to this, why Buda's paying so much more for their homes than we are.
Well, right. And it also showcases why you want to have more commercial properties, right? Commercial properties generally require less services, but they have a much bigger impact on the tax base. And an Austin number as an example, you know, huge commercial tax base in that city, you can see why it really helps. So just something to think about as you think about these rates. You can sometimes get focused just too much on the rate. If everything else was equal, that would probably be the appropriate question, but it's not.
Well, and I think the other really important slide that we just saw was who's, what the taxing entities are that go into your tax bill. And the city's tax bill is a small portion of the overall taxes that you pay. But people, since they live in the city, think it's all city taxes and that we control all of that. The others set their own tax rates. We don't set those rates.
Yes, ma'am. I 100% agree. I think the other interesting point is that the legislature passed a new bill. I think the home state exemption is going up.
Forty thousand.
We have forty, yeah, significant amount. I've forgotten the numbers, but that is on a ballot, I believe, this fall. I'm quite sure the residents of Texas will approve that. So that will be a lowering for most people's tax bill on just the school side of the taxes, although we don't know exactly what all those impacts will be. That will be something that for an average homeowner, though, in Kyle, that will help offset some of this increase. So just wanted to point that out, too, as I think to Dr. Harris's point, it's, there's a lot of different components in what you pay. It's not just the city taxes.
Thank you.
Profess, I'm curious to know, and I'm wondering if this is what's on slide 55, what percentage of our total budget is funded by property taxes? Is that slide 55, the 28% there?
That's correct.
That's correct? Okay, thank you.
So Mayor Profess, I know you wanted a short break at 10. I have a couple of slides on property tax rates, and we can stop at that, after that. So next few slides, you'll see a lot of blanks that we just don't have the information quite yet, and we'll share that with you in detail on August 19. But here on slide 63, this is a very high-level comparison of our tax rule between '25 and '24. I didn't have these numbers when we posted the agenda, but I can quickly share with you. The 2025 certified tax rule, if you exclude the TERSs, we have six TERSs. If you pull them out, our taxable assessed valuation, net of TERS, is 6.2 billion. If you compare that to '24, which is 6.1 billion, the net difference without TERSs is 126 million. Not a whole lot. The needle didn't change a whole lot. It's 2.1% for city only. If you throw in the TERSs, our total tax assessed valuation after exemptions, net, is 7.2 billion. The current assessed valuation for '24, tax year '24, this is also confusing. These dates are tax year. So tax bills go out in October of every year. So that's how they identify the tax year to be. So tax year '25 is our city's next fiscal year, fiscal year '26. So for the current tax year, with the TERSs, is 6.9 billion. So the difference is about 284 million. Or when you include the TERSs, the overall tax growth in the certified tax rule is 4.1%. It's like rain. When you want it to rain over your front yard, it never rains, right? So all the growth is happening, most of the growth is happening in our TERSs as compared to core city outside of the curves. So next few slides, I just don't have the information yet, and we can pause here, Mayor Profess, if you'd like.
All right. Thank you, Profess. It is 10:03, and we are going to recess for 10, 10 minutes? All right, so let's get back here at, we'll make it 11 minutes, so 10:14.
All right. Thank you. I want to call this special meeting back to order. The time is 10:20.
It's on. I mean, it shows a green light. We're on.
All right. Calling this meeting back to order, time is 10:21.
So Mayor and Council, we stopped at property tax. We're going to pick up with sales tax, and I'm going to share with you some statistics and highlights of sales tax. So this is a historical chart showing from 2008 to 2025, which is the yellow bar. Sales tax has ranged any from 2.2 million in 2008 to about 20 million in 2025. The $20 million is the budget that council approved for this year based on our projections. The green bar is what we are projecting for sales tax next fiscal year, $21.9 million, which is a 9% increase from the yellow to the green bar between '25 to '26. So when you convert that sales tax collection rate to per capita, I didn't want to go before 2014 all the way to 2008, this gives you a good representation of how our sales tax has increased as we have brought, more residents have moved into City of Kyle, homeowners, renters, businesses. So we went anywhere in 2014 below $150 per person to over $300. We've literally doubled sales tax per capita over this time period. So the next operating fund we'll talk about, it'll be in the same format as we talked about general fund. The next operating budget is the Water Utility Fund, and we'll give you the highlights and the summary. So the Water Utility Fund, as city manager, is recommending to city council for adoption. The revenues and transfers in total $28.6 million. Expenditures and transfers out, total $32.8 million. Of that, as we discussed earlier in the general fund portion of the presentation, $2.1 million is for equity transfers to the general fund. This is the revenue-based, 8% revenue-based transfers, and another $2.2 million for indirect cost reimbursement to the general fund for providing support. On the ending balance, we are projecting $11.4 million in estimated ending balance for the Water Utility Fund. The city manager's recommended budget includes rate increase for water service rates in '25, '26. If you recall, on June 7, the city's rate consultant, Reftellus Financial, came before you and presented the results of the rate study and the recommended rate changes, and we'll go over those here in a minute. There is a total of 2.7 new positions proposed for the Water Utility Fund and a complete list of new list of new positions is provided in the proposed budget document. So, this next slide is the sources of funds for the water utility. Total revenues is $28.6 million. Where does it come from? Water service or rates bring in 94% of the revenues for the water utility fund, $26.8 million. And then we have other fees and charges. These are late fees, late charges, cutoff fees, about 3%, and miscellaneous, another 3%. Mostly in miscellaneous, we have interest income. On the uses side for the water utility fund, it's for the next budget, it's $32.8 million. And if you look at this pie chart, the number one area that the utility spends money on is about 49% or 16 million, is on water supply costs. The number two area of there is the water operations. This is the crew that helps our customers supplying the water all the way to their homes. And then, of course, you've got transfers out at 3% and all the other cost components.
Perez, just the transfer out of the water fund, is that what you're referring to earlier where there will be from the, I guess, the collected revenue growth back to the general fund?
Yes. So there are two types of transfers from the water utility coming into the general fund. One is the revenue-based in lieu of taxes. Had they been a private utility, they would have been paying us property taxes. That's an industry practice, most cities do that. That's one piece of the transfer. The other piece is reimbursing the city's general fund for support services it receives from the general fund, for city attorney, for city manager, for finance, for purchasing, for HR, IT, those types of support costs.
Yeah, I saw that carve out in the wastewater fund and water fund in this presentation now that we're going that way. So it is a good practice to do that, right?
Yes.
To offset what you're spending in the general fund to service those funds.
Yes, so it basically moves the cost responsibility from the taxpayers to the actual users of that service, and they pay in their rates and fees.
I guess it also gives more transparency and, I guess, keeps the accounts separated enough to where you can understand what each one is responsibly doing, right?
That's correct.
Whereas in the past, you couldn't find, you wouldn't really know what was all moving and what it was moving toward.
Yeah, what portion of general fund costs were being incurred to support the water utility or wastewater or storm drainage. Now you can clearly see every year how much of that is reimbursed to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
So this next slide is the proposed budget. Same thing here, same setup as the general fund. Two actual years, approved budget, current year, City Manager's proposed, and then the difference in dollars and percentage from approved budget. If you look at the line number 15, for under the City Manager Proposed Budget column, you see a $4.2 million negative number, and that's basically, we are drawing down the fund balance, excess fund balance rather than raising rates. So we're using the excess reserves over and above the minimum required and applied it to offset rate increases next year for our customers. Line number 17, our fund balance in the utility fund is a healthy balance of $11.4 million. That is $4 million over and above required. Now this is based on assuming the rate increases. So the proposed budget is prepared around the rate increases we're about to share with The other thing to keep in mind about rate increases is if we don't do rate increases next year, it compounds in future years. So it is better to do rate increases as early as possible rather than deferring it. So keeping that in mind. So rate increase for water utility side only for inside-city customers. Inside-city customers will see a 20% rate increase for their minimum monthly charge for all customer classes, residential, multifamily, commercial, and irrigation. They will also see a 20% rate increase in their volumetric charges, the gallons of water that they actually use for all customer classes. This is based on true cost-to-service study done by an independent consultant. They took into account all of the costs that the utility incurs. They allocated based on what part of utility function that each customer class utilizes based on user characteristics. And when the results came out, they came out that we needed a 20% rate increase across. So, the two bars that you see to the right of this slide is showing the residential customer's average monthly bill impact. If they received a 20% rate increase, what is their average bill impact? A customer that uses 5,500 gallons of water every month, their average bill is going to go up by $15.35 from 76.73 to 92.07. It's a 20% increase. This is only for inside-city residential customer. For outside-city water customer, the minimum monthly charge goes up by 77% for all outside-city customer classes. Then there is also a 77% rate increase in their volume charge for residential customers, 222% rate increase for commercial customers' volume charge, and 143% rate increase for volume charge for irrigation customers. So for an average outside-city residential customer, there who uses 5,500 gallons a month, average throughout the year, their monthly average bill is going to go up by $71.27, which is a 77% rate increase. Goes up from $92.77 to $164.04. This is for outside-city customers, not inside-city customers. So on this slide, if you look at the inside, the top half is for inside-city residential. The bottom half, the red part, is outside-city residential. We haven't talked about the wastewater yet, but this gives you a glimpse of what's in the next few slides. So the water for average residential customer, as I showed you, goes from 76.73 to 92.07, a net increase of $15.35 or 20%. For wastewater inside-city, it will go up by 6%, and we'll go into the details here in a minute. Then if you look at the bottom of the slide, which is for outside-city residential, water rates are going up by 77% or $71.27, and wastewater outside-city customers will see a 30% increase, and we'll show you that in a minute. So if you compare our average residential water bill, this is for inside-city customers only, this does not include outside-city customers. We have included every city's current rates because we do not know what they're proposing to their councils in terms of increasing for next year. It is very likely that their rates will also change as we are changing ours. But for Kyle, the yellow bar is based on our proposed rate increase that's in the City Manager's recommended budget. So this graph shows you the average monthly residential bill for an inside-city customer, water bill only. Now we're going to get into wastewater utility, same setup for proposed budget, highlights. So City Manager's recommended budget for the wastewater utility fund, for the revenue and transfers in, totals $15.8 million. Expenditures and transfers out, $13.7 million. And included in that $13.7 million expenditures and transfers out is $1.2 million for equity transfer, which is the 8% gross revenues to general fund, and another $1.4 million reimbursement for indirect support cost to the, from, receiving from the general fund. So the wastewater utility fund will reimburse the general fund $1.4 million next year for receiving support services from the city's general fund. The ending balance for the wastewater utility fund is $17.3 million, and we'll go over the rate increases both for inside and outside city here in a few minutes. The total number of new positions being recommended for wastewater utilities, five FTs. The sources of funds for wastewater utility fund is total of almost $16 million. 95% of that comes through wastewater service rates. And then, of course, you have miscellaneous and other. Miscellaneous is small fees, cutoff fees, late fees, and other is primarily interest income. On the expenditure side for wastewater utility, the uses of those funds, the number one area that the utility expensed those funds is the wastewater treatment plant operations, 27% or $3.7 million. Transfers out is the next area, $2.6 million or 19%. And number three is wastewater operations. The best way to look at this between wastewater treatment plant operations and wastewater operations, treatment plant operations is all within the fence, the plant. Wastewater operations is what they have to incur outside that fence to get to the customer and bring it back. Here's the overall fund summary for wastewater utility fund, same setup as you saw for the other funds. Here I would like to highlight the line number 18, the fund balance projected for next year for wastewater is $17.3 million, and that exceeds the minimum required. So on the rate increase side for wastewater, inside-city customers will be receiving a 6% rate increase based on the cost-to-service study for minimum monthly charge, and another 6% rate increase for volume, volumetric charge for inside-city customers. So the bill will increase by $2.72 for an average inside-city residential customer from $45.36 to $48.08 per month. For outside-city customers, the minimum monthly charge is going to increase by 35%. The volume charge for residential customers will increase by 27%. And rate increase for all other non-residential customers, volume charge will increase by 53%. So the graph here shows you, or the average monthly bill for outside-city residential wastewater customer, their bill is going to go up by 30% or $22.57, from $74.90 to So here's the final slide that wraps up the rate increases between water and wastewater between inside and outside. So let's go over this real quick. The top half is for inside-city residential. So we're only showing you on this chart the average bill for a residential customer that uses 5,500 gallons of water and sends back about the same gallon of water. So for inside-city, the top half, water bill, average bill, is going up by $15.35 or 20%. Wastewater for inside-city customer, residential customers, going up by 6% or $2.72. Together, for water and sewer, the average inside-city residential customer will see approximately, that uses 5,500 gallons and sends back about the same, an increase of $18.07 or 15%. The bottom of the screen is for outside-city residential customers, the red. For water, average outside-city residential customer, same gallonage, 5,500, their bill is going to go up by $71.27 per month or 77%. The average outside-city residential customer's wastewater bill will go up by $22.57 or 30%. So when you combine both water and wastewater for an outside-city residential customer class, their average bill will increase by $93.84 or 56%.
Brian, when was the last time that we did that rate increase outside the city users? Just for people listening, I mean, if we don't do this, we would be subsidizing, I guess, with the future growth, our outside-city water users with inside-city users?
Yes, sir. I think it's about a $3 million subsidy that would be provided if you didn't do this rate increase for outside-city customers. This is the first, to my knowledge, the first rate study that we've done that's done a separate rate class for outside-city. We had a 30% surcharge that had been added in the past, but this is the first true rate study that's been done to show what that delta is and what we really need to be funding.
Right, so with that surcharge, this better captures what we need, right?
Right. If, you're exactly right. If you were not to pass on this additional fee to the outside-city customers, that's a fee that would have to be paid by everybody else, and that's about a $3 million delta.
I have a question about the percentage of customers that are both water and wastewater because a lot have, or some have septic systems, and especially that is the case outside of the city limits. Do you have a feel for what percentage of the water bill, water customers also are wastewater customers?
I do not have that information with me. I'll have to get that from our utility billing.
I think that's just curiosity for me, you know, I think that that makes a significant difference on the bills. And also on the water bills, there are other things. There is stormwater and trash collection, and so their bills, this isn't the only thing on their bill. So the trash collection for TDS is going up 2.5% this coming year, is all that's going up. So their overall bills won't necessarily reflect, depending on what's on that bill, won't necessarily be exactly what's here.
And it's important to note that this is an average water bill and wastewater bill.
Water and wastewater.
Some customers will be below that, some customers will be above that.
But the percentage will be about the same?
Yes. So here's the average monthly wastewater residential bill comparison. Here again, just like water, we don't know what the rate increases will be for the other cities we're comparing to, but for Kyle, it is the new rate that we have plugged in in this graph. So next up is our storm drainage utility fund, same setup as you have seen for the other three operating funds. This is the last of the four operating funds we plan to discuss today. So overall, the revenues and transfers in for the storm drainage system is $2.1 million, and expenditures and transfers out is $3.0 million. Of that, $240,000 is to reimburse the general fund for the indirect support costs provided by general fund departments. The ending balance for a small fund The ending balance for a small fund is a good, healthy balance as well, 700,000 is estimated to be ending balance next fiscal year. There is a fee adjustment to the storm drainage fee for next year. The city just recently completed the drainage fee study. The recommended drainage fee adjustments, we'll go over those just a couple of slides later. So the sources and funds for the drainage fund. Residential, the blue, is 56% or 1.2 million. And commercial is 41% or round numbers, $900,000. Same thing here on miscellaneous, we have mostly interest income. On the uses of those storm drainage fees, operations and maintenance, the big green pie, slice of the pie, is 68% for operations and maintenance or 2.1 million dollars. And then the next up is administration, about 20% or $600,000.
Profess, I've got a question. I've always, I've never really been clear why storm water is a separate fund from wastewater. Could you, or maybe Mike could explain that to us?
I'll give you the accounting explanation and budgeting explanation.
That may account for all of it.
So we want to segregate funds. We have the account, fund accounting system. And when you have a fee that we're going to pass on to a customer, if we combine it with the wastewater utility system, it is hard to calculate because not all wastewater utility customers are also drainage customers and vice versa.
Why would they not be?
Well, if you think about it, we have wastewater customers, inside city wastewater customers that are not on our system, our utility customers that are not on our wastewater system.
So I think the other, you could have someone on septic, you could have someone on another system, but they still have runoff into the storm sewers. And so that's part of the design. The other purpose of storm water fees and funds like this is to try to make sure everybody's paying their fair share cost of that. So it's based on impervious coverage across their lots. And so the fee is designed to capture what is the runoff they're getting. So if you have a large, big box retail center, as an example, that has a lot of parking lots, a big footprint, they have more runoff and pay a larger fee than someone who doesn't have all of that. And so those are, the way the fees are designed is to make sure everybody pays a proportional share. If you didn't have the fee, then everybody pays a tax rate. You could put it all into a general fund operation, you would pay a tax rate, but that's assessed based on value, not based on impact. So that's the design for that, is to try to recover for it.
That makes sense.
Hopefully that helps a little bit.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
I have a quick question, I guess. Yeah, not to get too far off the topic, but we have a street maintenance study and then we kind of allocate funding to repair the streets. But what about like the drainage aspect where I did get photos from a resident about water standing? So where in the budget do we, I guess, have the funding to repair and look at like, maybe not the street, but the drainage part, the covert part? Is that also assessed throughout the year to repair those needs?
Yes, sir. So we do have a drainage master plan that guides some of those investments. This fund will, my mic seems like it's, maybe I'm just getting too close, but it seems really loud, but the drainage fund itself will provide some capacity for CIP projects, but not a lot. It provides mostly operations in some capacity. The rest of that's going to be general fund or debt service related projects that you would issue bonds to do large projects. So that's, hopefully the master plan provides the good footprint of, or foundation of where we're going to make those investments. And then you have either general fund or storm drainage funds used to make those projects happen. And drainage is, you know, it's expensive. You know, that's one of the reasons that we try to, our development standards, our development code is designed to make sure that when new developments are coming in, they're putting in the correct drainage improvements and they're paying those costs to make sure everything is done correctly. But as cities have developed over the years, those weren't always done the way it needed to be, or the standards have changed. And so that's why you end up with some of these projects that we have to have to help handle that in other areas.
Okay.
Hopefully that makes sense. It's, but drainage can be very expensive.
Yeah, even, I guess, more than a road sometimes, right? Because you have to have a way to get that water and divert it to your creeks.
That's right. Yes, sir. But, you know, hopefully a lot, since we do have an extensive road program going in, all of those roads have drainage components to them as well, and that will be helped. I think that will help a lot of the drainage in those, at least those areas for those streets where we're putting them in.
Thank you.
Okay. So here's the fund summary for the drainage fund, same setup as the other operating funds of the city, two actual years, approved budget current year, city managers proposed. For this fund, I would like to draw your attention to line nine. You'll see a negative. That negative is the difference between revenue and expenditures. So basically, we are drawing down excess fund balance to offset drainage fee increase. So it helps our customers to minimize that rate increase. We are still maintaining the fund balance at or slightly above the minimum required. So here's the fee adjustment for storm drainage utility. The drainage fee study was completed in this month by HDR, an engineering firm. In a nutshell, study found that cost responsibility has slightly shifted between residential and commercial customers. The drainage fee in Kyle was implemented in 2015, hasn't been updated since that time. And this was a study that was way past due. So the recommended drainage fee adjustment for next year, the city's consultant or expert is recommending for residential customers that the fee be increased from $5 per month to $6 or $1 increase per month. Residential customers receive a flat charge regardless of impervious cover. For commercial customers, the drainage fee is calculated based on impervious cover. So every commercial customer is unique and different, and they get a custom fee charged to them based on their impervious cover. So the best way to show this, rather than showing you all customers, is the average monthly fee impact of this study on a average commercial customer. So the average commercial customer will see a $68.72 decrease in their drainage fee per month from $237.12 to $168.40 per month. The fee adjustment takes into account the drawdown of the excess reserve of fund balance to minimize the fee increase. The consultants also recommend that the city review this fee on an annual basis and adjust accordingly because our costs are changing, capital costs are changing every Speaking of capital cost, next section or segment is the five-year capital improvements spending plan. So at a very high level, the city's five-year spending plan, which covers fiscal year 26 through 2030, has 125 different capital projects between street sidewalks, all the way to parks and water and wastewater system. Next year alone, the project managers and experts have estimated that they will need $460.4 million for all of those projects that are active next year. They're not going to be all completed, but they're in different stages of whether they're in design, survey, construction, or final punch list. The five-year, number four, the five-year spending plan. This is the best estimate that the city's project managers and engineers have provided, totals 1.27 billion or 1.3 billion in round numbers. I have further broken this down for you to kind of have a good feel for what is going to be tax-supported and what is going to be user fee or other things supported. So of that 1.27 billion, 490 million at this point, the five-year spending plan shows that those will have to be tax-supported projects. Non-tax-supported projects total about $781 million or 61%. The bottom of the screen, the total spending plan, how is that broken by year? 460 million next year, 336.527, 210.828, and so on. When you add all five years, it's 1.3 billion. Now, mind you, all of these numbers will shift. These are best estimates at this point. There might be delays, there might be cost increases, there might be cost decreases as we go out to bid on these construction contracts. So these numbers will change, but this is our engineers and our experts' best cash flow requirements for all 125 projects in our spending plan. So instead of showing you 125 different projects, I have summarized it by funding source. So there was a question, I believe, Dr. Suninga, you had asked, how much do we have for storm drainage? If you look at number five, it's $31.5 million over the five-year window. Next year, they're projecting about $7 million on various CIP projects. To know what is included in that $7 million for next year for storm drainage, you would have to look at the CIP spending plan. The individual projects are listed very specifically, which project, what the location is, and what the dollar value is of those projects. So.
Hey, Profess.
Yes, sir.
What's the massive jump from, in the transportation fund from 26 to 27?
Master plan.
Okay.
Related projects. The GO, you'll see the bond on line six.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was anything else.
No.
I thought road bond was under road bond program. I was thinking transportation is in like public transportation.
There's a number of smaller projects that make that up. Some of them are relatively small, maybe a half a million dollar projects or smaller ones. Mike can detail some of those if you're interested in seeing it.
Mike Trimble, Transportation Director. So there are non-road bond transportation projects included as well. And so, yeah, that should be showing up here. We have some of those projects that are in the TERS. We have some of those projects that are actually, you know, just funded out of other funding sources. But right, it's a mix. All the road bond projects should be under the road bond. It looks like based on the spending plan.
So these would be the roundabouts. I think this is the Dacey.
Roundabouts are included in that?
Those are some of those.
Yeah.
You see them in years too.
We talked about not just the Kohler's roundabouts, but also the new roundabouts that we're designing on Kohler's Crossing, at Marketplace, and Cow Crossing, as well as some of the other Dacey Downing improvements, all those things. So we have some of that funding included in here as well. I'm sorry, cap cog match as well.
And lastly, the parks bond in 2020 and the counties matching dollar for dollar budgeted in the five-year window. So you can see the bottom line takes you back to 1.3 billion dollars. Okay, so I'm going to go step by step, take you to how this will impact. So 1.2 billion in capital spending. And you've got for each year what the cash flow requirement is. So when you take the five-year forecast of CIP spending plan requirements, what the engineers are telling us that they're going to need in each one of those years. So let me first give you the framework of this spreadsheet or this table or schedule. From far left going to right, we'll give you the purpose and description, year one through year five, five-year total, and the percentage. So the five-year spending plan, remember I gave you two big numbers for tax-supported and non-tax-supported? This will now break down of what those are. So for tax-supported CIP, the two main categories are the GO bonds, the road bonds, and the parks bonds. So that's what you see on lines two and three.
Those are bonds that have already passed.
Yes. The voters have already authorized, but we have not issued.
Right.
So on line four of that 1.3 billion dollars, 278.8 million is from parks bonds and the road bonds. Then there are other tax-supported CIP projects in the five-year window, right? So when you look at those 125 projects, there are projects that will have to be paid for with tax. These are parks, sidewalks, bridges, roads, other than road bonds. The general fund CIPs are mostly those sidewalks, streets, non-road bond streets, roundabouts, intersection improvements, traffic improvements, those types of projects. Under park development CIPs, you have various CIPs that David has shared with y'all in the master plan over the next five-year window. So all in all, if you look at the last line, number 10, of the 1.3 billion dollars, 38% or 490 million of that is going to be tax-supported in one form or another. If you look at year number one, remember we said the total CIP spending is 460 million for next year. Of the 460 million, 180 million in year number one will be tax-supported. Same setup, but now we're going to talk about non-tax-supported. These are projects that are paid through user fees, developer reimbursements, mostly water, wastewater, those types of projects, and TERS-funded projects. So if you look at the bottom line for line 22, we'll just cut down to the chase, 781 million of the 1.3 billion or 61% will be non-tax-supported. And I think the next slide will help put it all together. So those details for tax-supported, those details for non-tax-supported is shown here in just one line across. So the first row is tax-supported across. We went over this 490 million or 39%. Non-tax-supported is 781 million or 61.4% for a total, grand total of 1.3 billion. That's our CIP spending plan. And mind you, these will, these will change. These are estimates. But we wanted to take the time for you to understand and clearly understand from staff that when you see the master plans come through, you're seeing one thing at a time, right? You see a road master plan, you see a parks master plan, you see a water master plan, you see a. You see a road master plan, you see a parks master plan, you see a water master plan, you see a transportation master plan. But when you put it all together in the CIP spending plan, this is our five years CIP spending plan as it stands today.
Just a quick question. So in year one, if we're going to, we have CIP funding for 460 million. Our budget will have the money to pay for this, right, in year one?
No.
It does not? Okay.
So let me explain that. No.
Because we're passing a 600 something million.
If you mean we're going to have money in the bank, the answer is no.
Right.
The way we're going to pay these, right? Each year, we have to do a funding analysis. The engineers want 100 million dollars for tax supported projects. How much of that 100 million dollars do we still have left over in the bank? How much we're going to bring in from fees? How much we're going to bring in from interest income? How much we're going to bring in for, from other types of revenues that supports those projects? Then we come up with the net number that we have to borrow. That's how it works.
Right, because we couldn't pay all of these off in that next year, all of these projects that you have in there. That's just the money we need then in year one, without even completing the projects.
I would hesitate to say that that number, that 460 million, is what we're going to have to finance because I don't know that yet. I haven't done that. I haven't gone through that exercise of projecting.
Okay. I guess in my mind, I thought it was this amount plus what we need to get all the services and pay our staff. So that's why we're pushing a 630 million dollar budget.
It's operating and capital. This is the capital component. And one thing I always like to make clear is when we borrow funds, they're only for capital improvements. So if you look at the federal government, they're running deficits. That's operating, spending, all kinds of things that are going on. Here, we do not borrow $1 to be used for any operations that we have in the city. No employee salary is being paid by bonds or any of those things. It's simply the capital projects that are being built. So hopefully that helps clarify it. But you're right, it's this number plus all the operating stuff that we would have in the general fund. That's the total 600 million.
Right, yeah. And obviously, we can't, we're probably not going to, I guess, do we spend that much next year? Is this going to be a spending amount for 600?
Well, that's the plan. And so, you know, it is very difficult to put all of those dollars into work in one year, but we're trying. We're pushing very hard to get all those projects done, but the reality is it's tough to get 460, it's half a billion dollars in one year deployed. That's very challenging, but we're going to try to do that.
Got a question.
Okay.
A comment again. The thing about bonding for capital projects is you spread that cost over not, hopefully not the lifetime of the project, but at least for the next five, 10, 15 years as that project develops and as it is used by the residents, rather than all one year having to bond a lot of money or spend no money, one or the other. That's a, it's a difficult balance. That balance has not been in existence in past years, and we have not done the capital projects that we have needed to do. And that's, the complaints for the residents reflect the neglect that we have had, or somewhat neglect that we have had as we've grown. So this helps us catch up and it spreads the cost over the use of that item rather than dumping it all in one time.
Right. And that's concept known as generational equity is that everybody pays for their proportional share of the costs that they're here. And it's exactly right. I know these are large, eye popping numbers, but we're a growing, bigger city and we're going to continue to grow. And I think you really have to look at the context of how much are you going to be spending over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years as a city? It's equally large, you know, just the operating, our general funds, 75, 80 million dollars. Just in the next 10 years, how much will you spend on general fund operations? You're talking billions of dollars in the operations. It's, I kind of think about it as, you know, a lot of times you'll look at, if you're taking out a mortgage on a home, whether it's 100,000, 200,000, or 300,000 dollars, well, that's a big number, right? Well, how much are you going to earn over the next 20 or 30 years? That's the context. You kind of have to think about these because this is a 20, 30 year debt service that'll be paid. And how much will you spend? How much revenue will you bring in over that time? It's in the billions.
And as we grow, the debt spread out between more, you know, like the Public Safety Center. We went out for the Public Safety Center. We told the residents it would be about 14 dollars a month per resident, right? But as we grew, that's probably closer to about 11 maybe per res. As we grew as a city, more people painted into that. It's dropped down from that 14 dollars.
In theory, yes, but I don't know the exact numbers.
Yeah, just kind of theory, yeah.
Profess, going back to slide 95, you don't have to flip back, but it lists out 131 million rounding up for the road bond fund. So are we taking ownership of that 131 million this year? Is that, that's what that's saying, correct? Is that the total number that we're anticipating to spend on those projects?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm going to guess that we don't just write a check for 131 million dollars when we take possession of that money. So what happens to it once we receive it? It just sits in the bank or we earn interest on it? Like what happens?
What we do, at least the time being I've been here, we do not sell bonds in advance. So when we know, we know exactly what we're going to spend. We borrow from our investment pool until such time that we know we're running short, we got to cover it. So we, at that point, figure out how much is the net bond that we need to issue. So on August 5th, our city's bond council and financial advisor will be coming before you for about 125 million dollars of new bond issue. That number, dollar amount, was based on what the engineers told us, what the actual field conditions were, what we actually wrote checks, and what we think we're going to write checks before the next bond sale. So we issued, we came up with that number. That's how we come up with that number. So I don't know, I'm going about it the long way to answer your question, but.
Well, no, that's fine. I understand. So you said 125 million. So we vote to approve that, we take possession of that money. We're not going to spend it the next day. So where does that money go until we spend it?
There are two parts to that answer.
Yeah.
We've already spent some money that we got to reimburse the investment.
Okay, so, all right.
Right. And then we got to keep some money for the checks that both mics will be writing.
I like that, actually.
We invest it. It goes into our short term investments, our investment.
That's the answer I was looking for.
And then we draw those investments down as the cash flows are needed to actually pay the expenses.
I just wasn't sure if there was like incremental money that we could claw back while we're not spending.
Even on the investments, we have to be super careful. If it's borrowed money, we cannot earn more than what we're paying on those debt. So there is a thing called arbitrage. We don't want to take that risk.
Yeah, of course.
We have to pay penalty and interest back to IRS. Okay, so this is our 1.3 billion dollar cash flow requirement. Now, remember, we build projects, they look nice, they help our citizens. We got to pay, and what form of payment? So how much debt have we already taken and how much debt we're planning to take on? So this is as of today, the principal amount of bonds outstanding. 140 million, 590,000 dollars. And these are the different types of debt. This is principal only. I'll show you in a minute what the interest will be on this. So this is as of today. On August 5th, staff will be asking you and our bond council will be asking you for your authorization to issue 45.9 million in GO bonds, mostly for the roads, and 7 million of that is for parks that was approved by voters in 2020. And then another 79 million dollars in certificates of obligation bonds. Most of this is for water and wastewater utility. And then there are some park projects. So 124 million, 950 will be authorized if council approves on August 5th. So together, this is principal only. With the existing debt and what council will authorize on August 5th, total principal will increase to 265 million, 540,000. As the city manager explained earlier, these will be paid over time. So with that total debt, this slide shows you the responsibility of repayment falls on where, which system? 157.3 million or 59% will be tax supported debt repayment. Water utility is about 16% or 41.5 million wastewater, 40.2 million or another 15%. Between the two utilities is about 30.7%. Tax, TERS number one, 3.32% or 8.8 million. And TERS number two is around 17.7 million or 6.6. So this adds up to the the principal, debt principal after August 5th. So now you overlay that with interest over time. So 265, if you just look at the bottom line, the red line, 265.5 million dollars in total debt. Over time, we have to pay until payoff, interest, which will total about another 152.7 million for a total, grand total of 418 million, 300,000 roughly, in total principal and interest payback. So this schedule is only showing you what we are obligated to pay next year in debt service, principal and interest, and by the repayment responsibility of which fund. Our total debt payment next year with principal and interest is 30 million, 606,542 dollars. Of that, 74% will come from tax levy. Water, about 10%, wastewater, 8.7%. TERS one, 3.2, and TERS two, about 3.8%.
I guess, Profess, just a quick question, I guess, for people viewing. When we have bond council and they say we're going to, I guess, sell the bonds, who's buying these bonds? And I guess, I guess, and we're paying interest to the people that bought the bonds? Is that, like, we're getting the money from the bond sales, but how does that all work? What's the system of that? If you could put it just
Sure.
in a short understanding of
Sure.
where is the money coming from and then the interest paid? Who's holding the bond?
So let me use the analogy of your home mortgage. Most people can relate to home mortgage. When you apply for your home mortgage, most of the times, the home builder initially finances your mortgage and approves you for that loan. Then six months into it, they package whole bunch of home loans and they sell it off to banks and other loan companies to service those loans in it. They're out, they get their money back, they're out of the business, and your mortgage is now serviced by somebody else, right? So most people have seen that happen one time, two times, sometimes it happens three, four times over the life of that mortgage. Similarly, in the bond side, when we issue debt initially, there's a syndicate of investment banks. They're known as underwriters. So this 125 million dollars will be underwritten by four investment banks. They're huge national, international, actually, investment banks. They, they have to have the wherewithal, otherwise we would not select them because then we would have leftover bonds that we couldn't sell. So they have to guarantee us that on the bond sale date, they will buy all of those bonds. And bonds are sold in different maturities and different coupon rates depending on what the market is demanding. So they're structured in such a way that they're marketable bonds that the underwriters initially will take on, write us the check, and then they go about retailing those bonds. So then they turn around and sell it to institutional investors, high worth individuals, credit unions, insurance companies. They buy our bonds after the initial sale to the underwriters. Does that help?
Yeah, but why are we paying, I guess, the interest part? That's the part I don't get. If we sold the bond, it's out of our hands. So they sell it to investors.
Okay.
So investors are just waiting for that bond to mature and they're getting a small yield on it. So why the interest part is, are we tied in?
So just like your mortgage, you have, you borrowed 300,000 dollars, let's say 30 year, let's say 30 year mortgage. Over time, your monthly payment includes two pieces at least.
Principal interest.
Principal interest. So similarly, when we sell or issue bonds, we're borrowing that money, right? We're borrowing it from the underwriters and eventually the bondholders. We got to pay them every six months, the coupon rate that we agreed to and promised.
Okay, now I get it. Yeah. So we didn't have the money, so we borrowed the money and.
We're paying it back over time.
Got you.
So a simple way to think about it is, you know, if you're a retail investor, if you got a piece of this, you might buy a 5,000 dollar bond, one bond. And you would hold that bond for 30 years. At some point, you're going to get paid that 5,000 dollars back. But every year, you're going to get an interest payment on that 5,000 dollars. And every year, the value of that bond changes. You can, you can sell it in the secondary market. But if interest rates go up or down, the value of that bond changes. So it's, but for our simple, the way we're thinking about it is the bonds, the funds come to us. We put those funds to work and then we pay an interest and principal payment every year to retire the bonds. But it's, once it's sold, it can be traded with all these different institutional investors. And then ultimately, some, you know, individuals could have some of it as well, but that's not how that works.
Yeah. But our payments don't change.
Our payments do not change.
The risk goes to the investor.
Right. That's right. But these are large, large companies that bond, insurance companies buy a lot of these.
Okay, so we were at debt service payments due next year. It's a total of 30.6 million dollars. What I would like to highlight for you is for the debt levy for INS for next year. The direction given to our bond council, by council, our council, and to the financial advisor, based on that direction they received on April 1st, they have negotiated the bond sale such that there is a 8 million dollar principal, accelerated principal payment next year to keep the tax rate manageable where council wanted us to keep. So that's important to note. So this is, I think, the last part of my presentation, proposed fees and rates. So we talked about the tax rates, which we will discuss in detail on the 19th. We talked about water rates, wastewater rates, storm drainage fees. Now, all other fees that the city has, and we'll just briefly cover those. So when you look at the city's fee schedule, there are a total of 536 different types of fees. It includes water and sewer rates as well. So everything that the city charges, including open record fee or charge, animal tags, license fees, everything that the city charges is in that fee schedule. When you look at the total number of fees, the city of Kyle has 536 different types of fees. Of those, 54 are brand new fees for the first time being implemented next year. And of the 536, 321 will remain unchanged. And 161. And of the 536, 321 will remain unchanged, and 161 will change. And of that 161, 158 are increasing, and three are decreasing. And a complete listing of all fees and charges are provided in the budget document. The fee schedule is laid out by code sections, and we have highlighted any fee that is changing, up or down, or a new fee in yellow, so it's easy to spot and see exactly which fees are changing next year. So we talked about the four major operating funds, right? They don't add up all to 600 million dollars that the total budget is. So where are the other funds? 486 million of that 600 million total budget is, resides in 48 other city funds. So I've given you some examples of what those could be. Debt service fund, 23.2 million, general fund CIP, most of these are CIP funds that we didn't really talk about. We only talked about the operating funds. If you look at, the largest one is wastewater CIP. The wastewater treatment plant expansion project is bulk of it in that. Road bonds, 130 million, and then so on and so forth. So about 486 million of that 600 total budget is in other funds, other than the four operating funds we talked about. So next steps, we're almost there. My goal was to wrap it up by 11:30, and we're all there. So August 19th, we're going to talk about property tax rate. Hopefully, we'll have the final calculations from Hayes County Tax Assessor by that time. It's a very complicated and lengthy calculation process, and every taxing jurisdiction gets in queue for them to calculate their tax rates. So we have to compete with St. Marcus and Ulin and everybody else. Also on that day, this is important to note, that staff will be asking your approval of a resolution that is required by law to consider tax rate increase at a future council meeting, which is the first reading of tax rates and the second reading of tax rates. This vote will be a roll-call vote, because we have to publish each council member's name and how they voted on this resolution. So just, we've done this every year, it's nothing new, it's the same thing, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that that's what we will do that day, in addition to talking about tax rates. I think the strategic plan and HR policy is, is going to be discussed on September 2nd, so I'm going to skip that. On September 2nd, which is a regular council meeting, we will have the two required public hearings, one for budget fees and rates, and one separately for tax rates. We will have the first reading of budget adoption ordinance, first reading of property tax rate of adoption ordinance, and first reading of property tax increase ratification ordinance. And then finally, on Tuesday, September 16th, we'll have the second set of public hearings for budget, fees, rates, one hearing, and a separate standalone public hearing for property tax rates. Then, of course, the same three ordinances, we'll have the final reading on September 16th. In addition, the city manager and staff will be updating council on city's strategic plan, and we will also be bringing forward the following policies for your annual review and update. Investment policy is required by state law that it be reviewed and updated annually, so we'll bring forth that. The city's personnel policy and city's procurement policy will both be brought forward to council on September 16th for review and approval. All of city's proposed budget documents have already been posted on the city's webpage, and I've given the link address there for our viewers. And the final slide.
Leon.
11:30, on the money.
Profes, I just want to say thank you for your presentation, and you thanked your staff, but I also want to thank you as well, you know, I'm looking around the room, and I'm looking at all the brand-new, fresh faces, but then I see the two constants, and I'm seeing you, and I'm seeing Leon, and you've seen a lot of council members, you've gone through a lot of budgets, a lot of CIP projects together, and you guys have helped us as council members grow as well. I know y'all have helped me a lot, a lot of phone calls from me, I'm really sorry about that, Leon, Profes. But, you know, it, it shows the consistency of the city, but also should tell the presidents that we've got people that have been here a while that know the city, that the city's in good hands, but then you add the new fresh faces, we're really moving forward, so it's really exciting to see. But I want to say thank y'all to y'all as well for y'all's leadership, and thanks for all the, all the work that y'all have done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Tobias?
Not so much questions as far as that, you've, everything was perfect as far as the presentation, so I've got my notes, but I could always follow up later at a later time with, with everybody. I guess my direction, or, or how does council feel and, and city manager feel when we're looking at these two major meetings that we're having? Do we have a lot to cover, and also city council business as well? Again, my suggestion, if we have any executive issues that we have, could we look at having a meeting, let's say, like we did before, a special meeting on Thursday? I don't know how everybody else feels, because we've, this is a very crunch period time right here. We got public hearings, we got first and second readings. If we have other council items that come about, it could make for a long day for council and staff. If we were to, to spread out the executives, like for a further date that week, and then also for Tuesday, the 16th, if we have any executive discussions that the city needs to bring to us, we give them that much time as well, because I think we're just in this crunch time, and maybe looking at a different way of these meetings, especially right now and during this crunch period.
Yeah, Brian, do you, do you mind looking at your anticipated agendas for the next couple of meetings?
Yes.
In and around these workshops, and just kind of see if we need to pace out?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to do that, and I think the intent would be at every future meeting that you'd have between now and September 16th, that we would add a work session item, just for any questions, any follow-up items that you have. We'll put those on there, and councilmember Tobias is, we just had our special meeting Thursday, I think we'll look at scheduling one of those in August as well. Maybe, maybe after that 19th meeting, that way we could have a, a individual time where any additional questions, we could give you guys some more time to discuss it. We'd be glad to do that, we want to make sure, we know that it's complex, there's a lot of different pieces to it, and you need to have plenty of time to discuss that as a council. I think what I would say too, is if there are questions that, that you don't have yet, but you get those over the next few weeks, email them to us, let us pull all that information together, and we'll send it out, not only to each of you that asked the questions, but to the entire council, so everybody can get the same information. We'll be glad to have those for you, so maybe that's a way, a path forward, and we can certainly always have a special meeting if you, if you feel like you need it, but I, hopefully today, we've, we've got 90 to 95% of the things that were important to you, and, and it's just about refining a few things.
Yeah, that, that's it, and I don't want to take too much time, because I want the city staff to, to head out to their families as well. But yes, because it looks like this is a very huge budget that we have, we've got a lot of questions, and not only that, the city staff has other projects that they got to bring to us, so it's a matter of respecting their time and their effort to be able to give us their information and, and their input that they need, so.
Absolutely.
We could just look at that and decide from there. Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, just want to jump in and say, Brian, this was, and to all the staff and all our employees, this was a very thorough budget that I think we did a very good job of. Of, and I'm going back to April, where we discussed the tax rate, so nothing caught us by surprise here. And then we had a Saturday talking about the master plan and the rate fees, and I think we got that in there. So then we had what the budgets were needed for the departments, and so we were also aware of where you saved the 28 million dollars this year, and you're looking for more savings. So when we captured all of that before we came to this budget, it's like you put it all really well together, and so I just want to thank the staff for spending the time and putting all that out there, so that it really made sense, and, you know, I feel like everything that we were looking for is, is in this presentation. And I, I hope that was your intention, because it really made sense, the way you broke it down.
Well, thank you very much for that, we, we appreciate that, and I, I want to thank Profes, the entire finance team, they've done a great job of making this happen, but this is a true team effort. All of the department heads have been involved to, to make all of this, this presentation work and to pull all this together. I also want to give a shout-out to the communications team, Linda and Rachel, that whole team, they worked very hard to pull all this together, so it, it's truly been a team effort. You've probably seen some of our marathon meetings that we've had over at the Public Safety Center, there's a lot of folks in those meetings as we're trying to pull all this together, and it's a, that means a lot to, to have that, that comment, because we, we've tried very hard to give all the information to you in a meaningful way, so appreciate that, and thank you everyone for all of your work on it.
I just want to address the group for a minute. You know, we have some really difficult votes upcoming with this tax rate increase, and at least for the last two years, this now being the third, we've known this is coming, it was just a matter of when, and Brian and the team worked really hard, I know with Mike's help, to get some of these road bond projects back closer to the original timelines, and that's why this massive increase is going to take place now. So we've had discussions in the past about trying to incrementally grow it, so that it's not so startling when it does happen, and, you know, we have, you know, only a couple weeks now before we're going to have to start taking these votes, and I just encourage everybody to start thinking about how, you know, we're going to talk about this to the community, because, you know, someone I really respect likened this to being the cost of progress, and so just beware, these are things to start thinking about as we move forward, because these are going to be a couple tough votes, the hardest that we've had so far in the past couple of years, so. With that said, motion to adjourn?
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.